Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for March 25th, 2019. Call upon Kristen Rush to do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer. Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I move that we excuse Mr. Pfeiffer for tonight.
Motion to excuse Mr. Pfeiffer. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Devon, we've got three workshops tonight. Do you want to kick us off on the first one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first one will be the AIDA update and funding request. And this will be presented by AIDA Board President Ken Olson and Daniel Riley, Executive Director of AIDA.
Good evening, gentlemen. I see we've got several AIDA Board members in the audience. Appreciate you being here. A motley crew, to say the least.
It's nice to have them here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for giving us this time to meet with you tonight and tell you a little about AIDA. Some of you, I think, are more familiar than others of our organization. And we're going to kind of tag team it tonight and hope we have a presentation.
Yeah, we should have a presentation coming up.
Somewhere. Ah, there we go.
Do you have the clicker?
Clicker.
Oh, there it is.
Clicker.
Okay.
So we can see this. Can you see that?
Yes, we've got screens, too.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So let's see. So a little bit of history about who we are. So we're sixteen board members, but we have one vacancy that we are very careful about trying to fill correctly. And you did see some of our board members here. And I am honored to be the president of this group and representing them because this is a terrific group of people. They're smart, they're experienced, and they volunteer their time in support of economic development in our city. So I'm very proud of them. We also have nineteen retention -- or nine retention committee members. Our three staff members, this guy and these two ladies up here, if you'd raise your hand, are some of the best people that I've run into in my forty-plus years of business. And I tell you what, they can be successful just about anywhere. And you should be glad that they're working for our city as they are. We have sixty-seven strategic partners. And here's a kind of an example of the types of partners that we have because we can't do this alone. So we do it with all of these additional partners. A little bit of history about our organization. So from 1992 to 2010, AIDA managed two different financial assistance programs, revolving loan program and financial assistance grants. And after that time, or at the end of that time, we kind of realized that this really needed to be managed by another organization because we didn't really want to be the ones that were, you know, doing the collection process. So we have since turned that over to Colorado Enterprise Fund for that piece of the loan Since 2009, you were gracious enough to give us two and a half million dollars. And during that time, we've provided $383,000 in loans, $46,000 in training grants to fourteen manufacturers, and this is through Manufacturers' Edge. 1.1 million in grants to 136 small businesses and commercial property owners. And this was largely to improve the exteriors of their properties. $525,000 in microloans, and this is through Colorado Enterprise Fund. Over $700,000 in 21 Opportunity Fund grants and over $75,000 in other programs. But the real question you might have is, what do we get for that? What are the real benefits of doling out that money? So here's what the return has been to the city. Want to take this one?
Sure. Great, thank you. Again, Daniel Riley, Executive Director of Arvada Economic Development Association. And thanks for the kind words, Ken.
I meant it.
Yeah. And Ally and Melissa, they are incredible. They're rock stars and keep us on track with all these things that we're about to talk about. So I think what Ken really wanted to highlight here was the return on investment. And so AIDA has the fortune of being able to partner with the city of Arvada's Finance Department and quantifying a lot of the return based on the projects that we do. We can't take full credit for all these projects. Some of these are but-for instances. Many of these are complementary, you know, projects that we supported through kind of our resources that came to fruition. But just to give you an idea of kind of money in versus return to the city, through our revolving loan, Ken mentioned that we do have a partnership with Colorado Enterprise Fund. So we do also still have our own internal revolving loan. We haven't had as much demand for that program lately because the market has been so strong and businesses are able to get those through traditional sources. However, of all the loans we've issued in that previous slide, all of those have been fully repaid. So we're very proud of that and the due diligence of the AIDA Board in underwriting those loans. The AMI program, which Ken referred to, Arvada Manufacturing Initiative, is a program that was invented here in Arvada to leverage and subsidize technical assistance training for manufacturers. Of those manufacturers we worked with, fifty-seven new and retained jobs, 2.7 million in new capital investment, and over those fourteen grants, half a million dollars in cost savings. So those are Arvada businesses. The Small Business Grant Program resulted in $7 million of new private sector capital investment. Our microloan program, this is the one through Colorado Enterprise Fund, where we leveraged their funding with ours to deploy loans to fourteen disadvantaged Arvada business owners that were not able to qualify for traditional financing. And our Opportunity Fund, which is where we primarily fund our shopping center grants, we were able to track the sales tax increases from those specific shopping centers that we invested in post those grants and saw a net increase of $32 million in new sales tax in those centers. 3.8 million annually in new other tax revenue for the city, $34 million in new capital investment from those projects, adding a total of 689 jobs. Some of the other programs that we support through our funding as well include the Arvada Works Program, which you are very familiar with, with the Arvada Chamber, helping with their industry collaboratives, helping catalyze some industrial development at Parkway Center, for one example, doing some engineering studies. And also, we've begun to get into targeting some focus groups to better understand what the community's perceptions on growth and development are and help us shaping our strategic plan. So just for the folks on council, we're probably adding up all those numbers in their head. Just wanted to show you kind of our balance sheet, inflow-outflow, over the last three years that we received, you know, the funding from city councils, or not the last three years, I'm sorry, but the last ten years. So we brought in a balance into that program, but city council, as Ken mentioned, has committed $2.5 million to AIDA in the last ten years. And if we kind of break down all those different funding sources, you kind of see where we land there. So measuring success in this last three years. So the last time AIDA appeared and requested funding from our city council was in 2016, at which point we were allocated half a million dollars. And what we really wanted to talk about today was how we continue to innovate and think more strategically about deploying those funds, becoming better stewards of those funds. You saw the quantifiable numbers and the return on investment, but we're also not stopping there. We're making sure to continue to invest in refinement of our grant programs, making sure that that grant money is being deployed in the best places, to the best projects with the best return. We're currently underway in developing a new impact-driven strategic plan where we're trying to understand what we actually influence and impact and kind of boiling down our strategic and tactical efforts to focus on those things, very much in alignment with the process you're all going through with your new strategic plan as well. And also, we're trying to focus more on broader impact in the community. Historically, we've been focused on very specific, kind of one-off, individual businesses to receive grants and individual projects, but understanding how can we make an impact in helping, you know, our economic development mission across the entire city of Arvada in more broad-sweeping efforts. So kind of focusing on the communication and public relations side to understand what that's going to look like. In that same time period, in the last three years, so since our last request, we've deployed nearly $400,000 in funding to 54 different projects, yielding 260 million in new capital investment, creating and retaining over 130 jobs and generating over two and a half million dollars in new sales tax. Just some anecdotal information. I know there's some new council members since our last presentation in 2016. These are a couple of the but-for arguments that we have regarding Wonko, which our support in partnership with the city of Arvada led to the retention of Wonko in Arvada, including retaining the 250 jobs that they had and adding a new 150 new primary jobs through a $9 million expansion. And this project also supported the Phase One completion of the Clear Creek Regional Park in southeast Adams County.
Before you go on, Mr. Jones, a question.
Go back one slide, just a quick question.
Yes.
So the statement about developing an impact-driven strategic plan, what does impact look like?
So we're trying to define impact as the ability for us to have a really solid pulse on our tactical activities and measurable outcomes. Historically, in economic development, we measure jobs, capital investment, and we look at things at a pretty broad scale. And we're pretty sure the work that we're doing is fostering those outcomes, but it's really hard for us to tie the specific tactical work that we're doing to those outcomes. So feeling like we can do a better job because we have more robust data to utilize now, we can get a better understanding of what those specific dials are that we can be turning, knowing we have a very limited staff of three people, very limited resources. What are the most impactful tactics we can be, you know, deploying to get the most impact out of our strategic plan? And we've boiled that, and you'll see more of this to come, and John has been able to see some of this preliminary work that we've been doing. But understanding what is the economic impact of the work that we're doing, what is the community and customer impact, and what is the organizational impact? So really kind of breaking those things down and feeling very confident that when we report to you and say, "When we did X, we got Y," we can actually show that threat as opposed to more kind of arbitrary statements about, "We did a lot of things and we saw a lot of outcomes," and somewhere in the middle is our influence.
No, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
When I joined this board ten years ago, the goal for the strategic plan was to get it on one page. It has changed dramatically since then. And the change along the way has been, first, to add measurables to what our plan was, which to me was very important to see, what's the outcome.
Right.
Of what you're trying to do. And now we're taking it to the next level.
No, that's great. I think that's really good because a lot of times you can just focus on, well, we created 500 jobs. Okay, well, great, but what does that mean? So, no, I think that's really good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. So just coming back to some of the anecdotal highlights, prescient as a project many of you are familiar with as well, this is another but-for argument where we were able to step in in partnership with the city of Arvada and Jefferson County Economic Development to create an incentive package as well as kind of championing some land development code updates that were able to make this project become a reality in the city of Arvada, ultimately creating 200 new primary jobs and $8 million in capital investment and retaining that company's major operations here in Colorado as they were looking out of state. And then lastly, a program that we're very, very proud of here in Arvada, and this kind of ties back into a previous slide about, you know, continuing to innovate and understand where we're most impactful. This program was born here in Arvada, the idea of partnering with an extension partnership like Manufacturers' Edge, which is a state, it's the state's unit for helping manufacturers, but we could come behind them and we could leverage our funding with their funding to bring technical assistance, make it more accessible to small businesses and manufacturers in Arvada. Very small investment, as you saw, we invested around $47,000 so far in this program with incredible outcomes for those businesses that participated. And this has become so successful that it eventually went on to become a statewide model that this organization said, "Hey, every community in Colorado should be doing this because it's so impactful to these businesses and it's resulting in so much measurable outcomes of new investment savings and new jobs." And then now has grown into a national model where they're pitching this program at the national scale with the National Manufacturing Extension Partnership saying, "The way it was done in Arvada is the way we should be doing it across the country." So we're very proud and excited about this. And what we'd like to do is continue to see and innovate. Can we transfer what we've learned with this program to other industries in Arvada, not just manufacturing, but how can we really help businesses be more successful through technical assistance versus just, you know, traditional grant funding for real estate So as we tee up the request, want to talk to you a little bit about our funding philosophy, which is really why we're asking for the money. When you look at our budget, you saw that we have, you know, close to half a million dollars in our actual bank accounts. However, that money is either committed to existing projects or allocated for different types of projects that we want to use in the future. So wanted to help you understand kind of our frame for the request. But really, the board had made a decision that we'd like to build what we call our Opportunity Fund allocation to a balance of $1 million. And we want to do that for a couple of reasons. One is to use as reserves in case of an economic down cycle, that we can still continue deploying and offering the great programs and services we offer to businesses in Arvada and prospective businesses to Arvada even if, you know, the economic conditions change and the city finds itself in a different position with its finances. And then also, having that money in that program allows us to, we feel more effectively respond to highly impactful projects with meaningful financial tools. So every now and then, a development project or a prospect comes along that if we just have, you know, $100,000 in reserves, we really can't make a dent in closing the gap to make that project a reality in our community. But given a larger balance, gives us much more leeway to do that comfortably in a way that we think could have some major outcomes and impacts for the city. So that's the kind of philosophy behind it, as well as being able to maintain our current effective funding levels of our existing programs that have proven success and the ability to continue innovating and developing new programs and trying new things to see if we can, you know, be even more impactful through, you know, ideas that are still in formation.
And some of these programs actually have had demand build up. The Small Business Grant Program, most specifically, you know, started out with us having more money than the requests were there. And it has since turned around to where we now have many more requests than we have money. And one of the developments we've had along the way in the Small Business Grant Committee is, how do we deal with that? So we've actually had to develop a ranking system and a scoring system to decide, you know, who gets a grant and who doesn't.
So this is a little snapshot of kind of our current fund versus our desired full funding. Again, realizing that we're working towards full funding over time by continually, continuously partnering with the city of Arvada and coming back to you for requests over time as we deploy certain revenues towards our projects and programs while reserving some of that to build up that Opportunity Fund balance. So you can see the center column is our desired funding. The left column is our current funding and kind of what the difference is that we're working towards, again, over time, about a $1.36 million gap that we're trying to fill through our partnership with the city of Arvada.
And the unallocated cash balance of $73,000 is really the fuel we have for this terrific board to work with at this point. And would really like to have the ammunition to have them do more good work.
So summarizing just some of the benefits. Again, we talked about the quantifiable return on investment based on the information provided to us from our finance department partners here at the city. But some of the qualitative, some of the less measurable things that we think are very important, but ultimately, AIDA is a competitive advantage to the city of Arvada. AIDA is a very unique model. There are no models like this that exist in the state. And as to our knowledge, there are no models that exist like this in the country that are using the Board of Directors kind of hybrid with the city department and this close relationship of funding with the city council. And as you can see, it's been very effective in creating a lot of these qualitative benefits to the city. We are your partner. The city of Arvada wants to work in alignment and partnership with the city of Arvada. And we also understand that even though the funding passes through to our organization, our board is highly committed to being good stewards of that money. They're very, very conscious, very conservative, and they apply a high level of critique to all the projects that they consider funding. All of the Arvada strategic plan goals support your very own strategic results, and we hope to continue that alignment as you move into your new strategic plan and we move into our new strategic plan. The board also brings a lot of business perspective in what's going on in the business climate in Arvada, giving us a little bit better ears to the ground when it comes to our local economy. And as you can see, represented here by many different business owners and business professionals with lots of different experience, who own many different businesses in different industries. Our board makeup is actually specifically designed to have that diversity of representation from different sizes and industries of business.
That's a lot better way to say than saying motley crew. I think, I think.
You're right.
We, you know, our board strives to provide that business leadership and experience to you as city council and the city of Arvada and fuels the business engagement. You know, for a long time, and I can't speak to this, so it wasn't here, but there has not always been a great relationship, if we go back 20, 30 years, between business and the city. And having the board in place allows those businesses a safe place to engage in discussion with the city and making sure the city understands the needs and challenges and the opportunities of businesses in development here in Arvada, ultimately creating this positive pro-business culture where if you ask the businesses that we work with and ask our board, they have a really good perception and they feel really good about how city council and how the city of Arvada treats businesses. And on the flip side, there's a benefit to those businesses. So those are benefits to the city. On the flip side, this creates trust and credibility for those businesses, having this AIDA board in place and the work that we're doing. AIDA is the resource liaison for Arvada businesses. That means, you know, we handle every single need, request, potential thing that a business could work with. If we can't provide them with the answer, we'll go out and find the answer. We are an advocate and champion for business in Arvada, making sure that we can give business that confidence that if they want to do projects, they want to expand and grow their business in the community, that we'll champion and advocate for them at the city and develop those relationships that help them be successful. AIDA provides intentional strategic support of business activity and commercial development. So what this means is that we're very conscious of the nature of development and how business activity works within the confines of a municipality and making sure that we're intentional as a community about supporting the things that result in all those outcomes that we talked about regarding the sales tax revenue and the jobs and employment opportunities creative, and being very intentional and strategic about how we go about that. Businesses don't hesitate to call us. We get phone calls constantly. You can ask Ally and Melissa for any different variety of businesses about any different subject matter, and those businesses feel comfortable calling us, calling you, the local government, which is not an easy thing to achieve if you go to other communities that a business feels comfortable picking up the phone and calling City Hall. And AIDA has built a reputation here in the, in the Arvada business community that we are helpful to them if they need help facilitating conversations, solving problems, bringing departments in the city together in collaboration to help them achieve their goals. And lastly, AIDA serves oftentimes as a bridge to the gap that exists between what the private sector wants to do in our community based on the resources they have and their vision for their industry and their business, and the reality of the needs that the community has, the reality of the available real estate that we have to work with, and the reality of the financial feasibility to make those projects come to fruition. So we look at ourselves as a way to kind of bridge all those respective gaps and make things actually happen here. So we're very proud of the work that we do in regards to supporting both the city and the businesses.
Mr. Jones again.
Sorry. So in any legislative session down at the State House, what is AIDA's role with supporting the businesses as it relates to decisions that are made down there at a state level that may impact.
Right.
Local businesses here in Arvada where we may not have as much control?
That's a great question. And we have a few different strategies to assist with that. One is, again, having our ear to the ground and knowing what those business consternations are, so to speak, and what their, you know, feelings are about proposed legislation, existing legislation, opportunities for new legislation. And we really rely on our strategic partners. So going back to one of the first slides about the strategic partnerships, Arvada Chamber is a wonderful tool that has mechanisms in place where, through their Government Affairs Group, they have, you know, a bat phone, so to speak, to the Capitol, able to talk to our local legislators. We also leverage our relationships with our regional and state economic development partners, so Adams County Economic Development, Jeffco Economic Development, Metro Denver Economic Development, and the Economic Development Council of Colorado, all who have respective lobbyists that we can then feed information saying, "These are important issues to Arvada businesses." And that's a two-way street, too. They'll come back to us and say, "We are making progress. We need an Arvada business who cares about this to come down and testify to a committee, and we can help make those connections and bridge those gaps as well."
Well, I think that's another benefit to business in Arvada. And maybe you stated it somewhere else, but I think that's another thing.
That's a good point.
That needs to be included in kind of your messaging.
Thank you. So I'll kick it back over to Ken.
So our request is to help us fully fund our organization. We realize that you have a lot of requests for city money, that there's a lot of demands, a lot of important demands. What we're requesting is $500,000 from projected available funds on a one-time basis to fuel this board to go do good stuff again. City manager has kind of given us a heads-up that it's not in his current budget. And I understand that. I understand he has a tough job. What we wanted to show you tonight was the results you're getting and the benefits you're getting from the money that you put with this organization. And so we thank you for listening to us tonight.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I serve on the Economic Development Association Board as kind of the liaison to the council. And I would just want to reiterate a couple of things that they said in their presentation. One is my experience of being on that board for a couple of years is they truly are really good stewards of the money. Every expenditure is really carefully considered. The board has healthy discussions. It's a very board with a lot of different experiences and perspectives. And so you really get a good look at things like that. The other thing I'd say that really wasn't in their presentation, but that AIDA, I think, has really an outsized impact, that the impact that it actually has is many times greater than what's put in. And we see that at board discussions and from some of the businesses that are new here, as well as some of the ones that have been here for a long time. The other thing that AIDA seems to really be good at doing and able to do, much, much better than we can do with fiscal policy here in the whole city, is to move faster and be more flexible. And I think, again, the AIDA Board is really good at looking at, you know, where have we been, where we are, where are we going, what do economic conditions look like, and be able to move quicker than we do, given our annual budget cycles. And the other thing that I think is really special with AIDA, and I haven't seen in any other city, and I was involved with a little bit of economic development in another city, the liaison with the city, the advocating within the city staff, that kind of bridge between businesses and the city government, I think is really an important aspect. And I think you mentioned it in your presentation, but I think it has a bigger impact than your presentation would let on. And I think, you know, all of it together really adds up to, AIDA is a competitive advantage for the city of Arvada. And I don't think you need to do any more than just look around to the neighboring communities and look at how consistently Arvada is doing economically compared to most of the communities around us. And AIDA has a hand in that part of that, and I think it shows, you know, kind of how, what a great impact they have. So, you know, I think, thank you for the presentation. You know, budget things are hard. We'll have hard discussions about it, but I really think AIDA is doing great work, and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you for those comments.
Ms. Ford.
I also wanted to compliment you on the work that you're doing. I get a lot out of the breakfast meetings that you have. And I, too, had an experience where I of the breakfast meetings that you have, and I, too, had an experience where I called AIDA for a business owner and got some great information. So I think it's terrific what you're doing. And I just had two questions for you. I wanted to ask you, you mentioned your, some of your strategic partners, and I was just wondering if you consider Urban Renewal a strategic partner and its board?
Absolutely. You know, I think Urban Renewal serves a vital purpose in our community, and their mission is, is they will argue not economic development, but to remediate blight. But we see, I think, a complementary relationship between any work that they're doing that involves commercial development or redevelopment, and making sure that we understand how to support them or complement the work that's being done, if it's going to be in alignment with our economic development and strategic goals, as well as the city's economic development goals. So we consider Urban Renewal a friend. They do have a representation on our board of directors as well.
Okay. Thank you. And my last question has to do with business incubators. I've heard a lot about them. I personally haven't seen them in action, but I was wondering if that was something that the board has ever looked at in terms of helping with development of small business here in Arvada?
Yeah, the topic has been broached a handful of times, I think, within the board, and our board, again, being very good stewards, is always very critical about trying to understand, you know, what type of impact can they have. And so far, the board has not decided to kind of actively pursue on its own accord, you know, launching any sort of incubators here in Arvada. However, I will tell you that our strategic partners do have, you know, incubator-type systems that we support either through our, on the operational, the internal city budget side, through our, the AIDA department, support of those strategic partners that operate those types of services, or our small business development partners, as well as volunteering time to serve on their various committees and boards. So it's something where if, I think, the opportunity presented itself, and we've had various pitches come in front of the AIDA board, I think notably within the past couple of years, we've had one where they really dug really deep into that company and its financials and its business plan and decide, you know, that wasn't a good fit for us, and passed on that. And ultimately, that organization, you know, ended up not doing so well down the road. So they think they made the right decision there. But I'd say the board's definitely always open to any sort of strategic and tactical opportunities that help advance our mission.
Mr. McGaw.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, I, first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much to AIDA for the many years that it's been the city's partner, it's the city's arm in economic development. It's certainly a program that has been beneficial to the city. And thank you specifically for the times that you spend in your current positions and current roles, and that goes to our other staff and our board members of AIDA. I'm wondering if you might give us a little clearer definition of what the Opportunity Fund is. Is it everything that is not covered in the other six or so funds? So it's just, that's the larger, undesigned at the start, undesigned pool of funds?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. It is somewhat of a catch-all in regards that it doesn't, intentionally does not have parameters around its use. So it's not necessarily completely our unallocated balance that's available. We did allocate it and kind of set it aside. So for that reason, it does serve somewhat of a purpose of being our reserves or building towards a large balance that we could be highly impactful to a great project, should it come our way. But to your question, that's true, that it is very flexible in how those funds can be deployed in order to meet the needs of a specific project or opportunity that we believe would be in support of our mission.
Okay, and so the reason for the request for a very large desired funding level is that that money is available for the opportunities as they come along so that something can be done quickly?
That's correct. Either being reallocated into some of our existing demonstrated effective programs that we've deployed in the past, should we experience some sort of down cycle that we don't have the ability to replenish our funding, or, again, building that reserve balance up to a point where, like I said, if some amazing project or opportunity comes our way, we can have some real impact towards that coming to fruition.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, sir. So I just want to say thank you for all that you do. I had the opportunity to serve as an ex officio member of the AIDA board from 2008 to 2013, when we did have the funding and not the projects. And it's exciting to see that you have the projects now. It's fantastic, the return on the investment. And I feel like Arvada Economic Development is an investment that we can't afford not to make. The return is exponential, and I would certainly not want to lose an opportunity to not, because we didn't have funding there and available. So I guess my question, Mr. Devon, is how could we make something like this possible?
What would be my preference, counsel, would be to break the allocation that they're requesting in two years, $250,000 this year, $250,000 next year. That would, I think, help us in terms of maintaining our required fund balances and also providing some resources to AIDA, and we could, I think, accomplish that pretty easily if that would be your preference, to provide this $500,000 funding allocation.
Thank you for that question.
Well, let me follow up with that. If we were able to do $250,000 now, with the understanding that we would try to supplement that as soon as possible, would that help get you towards where you're trying to get to?
Yes.
Okay. And then let me follow up with Mr. Devon. If we had a situation where something fell from the sky, a great opportunity, would we have the ability, and I see Mr. Archer behind you nodding his head in a positive fashion?
I was gonna say, which way is he nodding his head?
Positively.
Yes, the answer's yes, Mr. Mayor.
That if something came up where you needed more money sooner?
It could come back to you.
Right. Yeah. Yes. And I'm hearing from our staff that we could do that.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
We would very much appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, I've got a couple of comments as well. As you might expect, I'm frequently contacted by businesses in our community, and with the understanding of Mr. Devon, I'm able to contact AIDA immediately to be basically the ombudsman on behalf of these businesses. I think specifically of a restaurant that's looking to come into Arvada that had a little hiccup that they needed to get worked through, and AIDA was able to help resolve some issues internally here at the city to move it along more quickly. The folks at SAS who have acquired Apollo space capsule, dummy capsule, that they want to display at their business, that I think is going to be a great draw for our community, and just as an asset, call up Daniel, and he helps the company work through our planning staff in terms of how to do those kinds of things. And just, that's just two small examples of the many, many times that I'm able to go, both with Daniel and then Ryan as his predecessor, and Hazel as their predecessor, and Tim Steinhaus as their predecessor, that over the years, have those people to be able to go to, to help get things resolved here at City Hall from a very pro-business perspective. Having that advocate here in City Hall, I think, and a lot of it dates back to the, this is the Arvada way, that we do indeed try to recognize the needs of our citizens, including our business citizens, and moving through the system more efficiently and getting positive results for all of us. So I certainly echo and thank each and every one of you, including the back row sitters here today, for your time and energy and devotion to this absolutely great organization. I think my understanding is that we want to direct Mr. Devon to, first of all, find $250,000, tell us where that's going to be, what other things is that going to be affecting, and then maybe look long terms of how do we eventually get to the full funding request of the board. Okay? Everybody's in agreement with that direction? You're so directed, Mr. Devon. Very good.
Well, at the risk of embarrassing this young man next to me here, I think you've seen a good example of why we're so pleased to have him as executive director of this organization, and how well-spoken he is. And I don't know how many times I've heard people in our organization say, he and the other two ladies make our job very easy with what they do. So we're very proud of them.
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman.
And thanks to the board. Yeah, a quick break?
Yeah.
Yeah.
the City Council and the Planning Commission regarding the Land Development Code update, and we will have Planning Manager Rob Smetana lead this off. Also assisting him will be Todd Messenger and other members of our, of our Community and Economic Development staff.
And I see we've got several members of the Planning Commission here again tonight. Thank you. And as you have questions, I'll certainly want to get those incorporated in as well. Pretty good.
All right. Well, as Mr. Devon mentioned, we have Todd Messenger here as well, and he'll kind of jump in here as we go through the presentation. There are basically five topics we want to touch base with you on tonight, and we'll get to each of those as we move through the presentation here. Just a little idea of where we are in the process. We're near, near the finish line. We're getting there, and we hope to have a draft ready to present to the community and a full draft to the community and council by later this year, September. So, kind of the first topic we want to touch base with you on, and we may have to circle back to this one after we talk about zone districts here a little bit later, but kind of wanted to put this one out front, which is, as you know, about a year ago or so, we put a moratorium on the newer style of self-storage development that we have in the community or had in the community. And after that moratorium ended, we restricted self-storage to just I-1 and I-2 districts. And so, that's the way the code currently reads. We proposed to allow both the new style enclosed self-storage and the older style self-storage with the roll-up doors and exterior access, still maintain those in the I-1 and I-2 district. But with this effort, also include the enclosed self-storage in the commercial general zone district. And that would allow us to kind of really look at where those zone districts would be in relationship to residential development, adjacent residential development. And through that, also require that those go through a conditional use process so that the council can and staff, Staff Planning Commission and council can also discuss, you know, buffering from any adjacent residential height if that's an issue. All those can be looked at through the process and hopefully come up with a site plan that is appropriate for any given location in the community. So, it's kind of the first topic we wanted to throw out there.
Mr. Marriott?
I want to ask you just a quick, quick question about that. So, to me, the, the self-storage proposals we've seen before all end up having, being a little bit of an anomaly. And to me, when I look at it, it always seems to be the, because they require such a small amount of parking, it makes available so much property for building. So, to get to the maximum lot coverage and stay within the setbacks, there's, it seems to yield a building envelope that's sort of building size that's much bigger than like any other use that that property could be on because there's no parking required. In other words, if it was an office building, it would require enough parking that then that, that becomes restrictive of how big the, the building is. Or if it was a retail building, obviously comes with a much more intensive parking usage. So, you've got parking instead of building. But the storage, because it requires so little parking, yields such a big building. What do you, have you guys looked at and what are you thinking about anything that, that defines that different? Either, either the lot coverage different for storage versus other commercial usage or setbacks different for storage versus other commercial usage or, you know, something that kind of helps bring those things back into ratio? Because I think with some of the ones we've seen, part of the consternation has been that it yields such, something that seems to be so out of scale over what we expect, kind of what, what your expectations might be.
Sure. That's certainly something we can look at. It still has to meet the buffer requirements, so, but you're correct. You know, instead of being close on one or two sides, it could potentially be close to the boundary on all four sides. And so, we can certainly take a look at that and, and calibrate a lot coverage that may be more appropriate if we are looking to kind of shrink the footprints of those buildings.
Okay.
The only, we just want to be able to be, you know, fair about, about how that would work, maybe kind of comparing that to if we did ultimately get an office building that was structured parking, you know, that building may kind of take up the same amount of square footage as well because they wouldn't be dealing with surface parking. But that's certainly something we can go out and do some research and evaluate.
Okay. That's something I'd like to see just, just more discussion of before we're done with this whole thing, just a point I'd like to see at least investigated.
Okay, sure. Councilman, there's two other sort of considerations on that. The first one is, in, i-if you allow the bigger building on less land area, then you get more self-storage per unit of land area. And since self-storage is not a very economically productive use, but it supports other uses, with the right buffering, it might actually be a good idea to build more on less in certain circumstances. The second part is the current proposal, I think, for parking for self-storage is a, is a significant increase from where it is now, based on sort of where the, the nodes are going back and forth on it. So, that also might serve to reduce the footprint of the buildings further. So, we'll have to balance all of that. But I just wanted to introduce sort of a counterpoint to it, and I agree, we can, there's a lot of ways that we can introduce more green around that building and set them back.
So, I appreciate the counterpoint. But here's where I would maybe take issue with it. I think within certain zoning, so in an industrial zoning, I would agree with you wholeheartedly. But, but as before, we've allowed these in zoning that's not industrial and, and it's yielded either some completed projects that seem to be out of scale with some of the public's expectations or proposed projects that, that were, while they fell within the rules, seemed to be kind of shocking in scale for some folks, which means it was outside of their expectations. So, I think, I think the zoning or where it's at matters. And, and so, you know, to me, I guess I just want to see a deeper dive, a little more detail on that. I'd like you guys to just, just look at that as you go, as you go forward. Let's just keep that for, you know, make that for consideration. I just want to hear more about it before we get done.
Sure.
That it doesn't just end up some way.
And I think it also, we need to look at exactly where we would remap the commercial general too and kind of look at it holistically as part of that effort as well.
Right, right. Any other council questions on this one? Anything from the Planning Commission? Not on this one. Okay.
All right. So, the next topic, we just wanted to circle back to a conversation we had the last time we were here, just to make sure, sure we're on the same page with you in terms of short-term rentals and to make sure we heard the clear direction of where council wants to go on this. So, generally, we're looking at as a starting point, you know, to protect neighborhoods while accommodating a newer use that's out there and also require licensing for this type of use. So, the things we discussed with council last time and got feedback on were that council was generally okay with the idea of entire house rentals, a unit or individual rooms, so kind of the full gamut of a, sorry, short-term rentals. So, that could be in a full house, it could be an accessory dwelling unit that's rented out short-term or a bedroom that could be rented out short-term. And then, we would require one off-street parking space in addition to the already required parking for a particular residential unit. That we would only allow short-term rentals, there to be one rental at a time, so you couldn't rent out two different rooms to do two different groups. That we limit the, limit to one, the number of short-term rentals on a property, so you could not rent out the main house and the accessory dwelling unit. It would, could be one or the other. That renters would be allowed to have short-term rentals as long as they had the permission of the actual property owner. For multifamily, it would just be one unit in a multifamily building that could be rented as a short-term rental rather than essentially you could have a multifamily building become a hotel. And so, we wanted to make sure that was restricted and that renters in a multifamily building would not be able to have a short-term rental. They would all be subject to HOA regulations, so if the HOA would not allow it, we would not allow it. That we would have a licensing requirement, and so, we would work through finance on that. That there, one of the issues that did, did come up was the issue of liability insurance and whether they needed that or not, so maybe we can get a little more clarification on that tonight. That the license is not transferable, so it runs with the owner of the property, not the land. If, if a new owner comes in, they'd have to come back in and get a new license. And if the whole house is rented, there has to be somebody who can do, deal with emergencies. So, we would have to have an emergency contact, and that person would have to live close enough that if there was an issue, they can get there and take care of whatever that issue is. And that, for any reason, that the, or that the permit can be revoked if we have issues with the particular residential unit. So, with that, is there anything that, is there anything we missed or some, something we didn't get right?
Mr. Jones, you're first.
Going back to...
A lot more lights lit up on this than self-storage. People's storage, I guess, is more of an issue than self-storage today.
Going back, I think one slide more. Yeah, the, the limits on the, the property use. And I want to make sure I understood what you said. So, if I owned a town home and I lived and there was six units in our particular building, only one of those units could be rented?
No. In that instance, sorry, I should have clarified. That, if it's different ownership, then each owner could rent it out as a short-term rental. As a multifamily, if it's under one corporate ownership or one ownership, then only one unit in that building.
So, if I owned six town homes and rented them all out, I technically could use one of them as a short-term rental property?
Yes.
And the other, the other five would be long-term rental?
Long-term.
Okay. I didn't, that, I didn't understand it that way when you read it that way, so, thank you.
Okay. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I don't, I don't want to get into the administrative aspect of it, but I did have a question of how it has worked in other places where, related to a renter who is able to enter into short-term rentals with authorization from the owner. Has that become a, a legal document between the owner and the renter? And if there are problems with the short-term rental, is the redress to the owner or is it to the renter?
I think...
How is that, how does that typically work?
Yeah, we would, we would need to see a legal document.
A legal document.
Allowing, allowing that to occur. And I think we would initially probably go to the renter, but if there was no satisfaction there, we would go to the property owner with any issues.
Okay. But administratively, you know, I don't want to get too far down there, but I'm just wondering, but it, that's the way it would be, a legal document that has some enforcement behind it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
On page 2B, it says the SDR license is not transferable. The license would terminate on the sale of the property. And I put in, or a new rental agreement, because if it's a new renter, then they would have to get another license.
Yes, that, that would make sense, yes.
Right, okay.
Mr. Marriott?
I want to go back and revisit this idea of the liability insurance. So, when you're proposing liability insurance, who's providing liability insurance and for whose liability? Who's, what are, who are they insuring?
They're basically insuring the property and the rentor, the short-term renter, for any accidents that may occur.
Okay. But so, are you, are you saying that the property owner needs to insure the public at large against the actions of a short-term renter?
No, it's more about the liability of the, or the protection of the rentor, making sure, you know, they meet all the safety requirements.
So, the, not, not the landlord insuring themselves against, against a accident happening to one of their renters, but insuring the renter against accidents that may happen within the home?
It's sort of both. It is about, it is about protecting kind of both, so they would have insurance.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, a couple of things. One, is that even available out on the market? Have you done any looking into that? Is that something that, that actually exists? You know, in other words, I, as a homeowner, I can buy liability insurance that covers, protects me against actions of my own, but I don't know that I can buy liability insurance that protects me from actions of somebody else against somebody else. You know, is that, is that even really, I, I don't know insurance very well, so I, maybe somebody has an answer to that. Is that really a...
Certainly, we can look into that, but this is a pretty common requirement for short-term rentals across the country, and as far as we know, that hasn't been an issue for anyone to get that type of insurance.
Okay. The bigger, the bigger question to me would be just, and, and I'm going to look to City Attorney Rachel Morris here. What's the city's interest in, in requiring this? So, I understand that when, you know, car insurance is mandatory, because when I drive my car, I have the ability to harm other people. But what, what's the city's interest in requiring an insurance, insurance for a contract between two parties?
It's really about, I mean, yeah. There we go. Okay, now it's on. It's really about ensuring public safety. So, a lot of times, insurance policies like this are intended to ensure that there is a recovery for the renter. So, if you have someone who's renting a, does a short-term rental and they slip and fall on ice in the sidewalk before they go in the front door, this is ensuring that there is money there to cover them for their injuries and potential liability there. So, that's, that's really what we're looking for, is ensuring public safety.
So, my question though would be, what's the city's interest in that? You know, if, if a renter were to get hurt slipping on the ice on my home, seems like I might have an interest to insure myself against that. But, but I don't, you know, the city, where would the city have any interest in that?
So, the city's really not going to have liability for those particular issues. I think it goes back to just situations like you're talking about where we require insurance on a number of different things. But it, it just, it goes back to public safety, I think, at the end of the day.
What, what does the city, where, I mean, where, where in this, where, what are we required to insure? I mean, we're required to have liability insurance for driving. What else?
We require insurance for a lot of our different vendors. I suppose that's for us specifically, but there are other things, work in our right-of-ways, things like that. We don't, I don't think that we have to, as a legal matter, require a lessor to insure against liability that for claims asserted by the renter. But, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's certainly an option.
Okay.
Mr. Daley, you want to chime in?
Yeah, I just wanted to supplement City Attorney Morris's response. I think, keep in mind, this is a workshop.
Mm-hmm.
And so, this is really a proposal.
Yeah, sure.
That staff has come up with, and I think what it really, what we're really trying to do is take the council's temperature.
Find out, well, yeah.
And so, if, if council has any directions in that regard, we want to make sure that we're, that we're tracking along with the way council is thinking. And so, if council says, "We really don't want you to have that provision in there," then, then we'll, we'll, we'll definitely won't put it in there. But we, we want to make sure that you know what the proposal is.
Right, okay.
Yes. Mayor, President Marriott, I'm not quite sure that this would apply, but I think council may recall that somewhere around New Year's Eve or so, we had a situation where a, a homeowner allowed a short-term rental in their, in, in, in a, in a housing unit that they owned, and there ended up being a very large raucous party with shots fired. And there was at least a couple of people who, who sustained injuries. Not sure this totally applies to this situation, but certainly wherever, wherever we could protect our liability in a situation like this, I would certainly want to see that occur. So, you know, I, we may need to explore this a little bit more, but I think the actions of a renter that, that maybe put the public at risk or the actions of somebody who's running, rents it in a manner that puts the public at risk is certainly what I would be open to figuring out if we can protect ourselves from it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that perspective. I, here's what I, I would, here's what my take on it is, my thought on it is, is that other than driving, rent insurance is not compulsory. In fact, you know, your mortgage company can make homeowners' insurance compulsory or conditional on, on, on maintaining a mortgage with them. But if you own the property free and clear, there's no, absolutely no requirement that you carry homeowners' insurance. And with the example Mr. Devon gave and, and others, whether it's somebody who slips and falls on the ice or a, a party that gets out of hand, those situations are not unique to short-term rentals. They can happen in any property, whether the property is owned by the injured party or whether the, a renter is, is in a long-term rental or whether a renter's in a short-term rental. And to me, it seems like this insurance clo-point here is, is like a, "Well, we should at least do that kind of thing without really clear reasoning why." And it also, to me, seems to be a hurdle for somebody who, who wants to do short-term rentals. Now, that may be both good or bad. I think discouraging commerce or discouraging lawful economic activity is never a good thing. However, getting only people who are serious about doing short-term rentals, if you want to say that, might be, might be also a good thing. For me, I would probably rather see it out. I just don't see why I think, you know, where it behooves the city for this to be any more complicated or any more difficult than it needs to be. And, and that provision, I think every property owner or renter should, should be educated enough to ensure their own interests at all times if they so choose. And if they so not choose, then they choose to accept the liability, and, and I think that's probably the way to be. So, anyway, that would be my input on it. I don't know if the rest of the council feels similar or opposite. Either way is fine with me, but just want to make sure you know what I think.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I wanted to ask, do we know whether or not a lot of the internet businesses that, you know, advertise these short-term rentals, do they require this type of insurance?
Yeah. Councilman Ford, it's my understanding, two things. One is that short-term rentals are excluded on most homeowner policies, and so, you get a rider if you want to insure the short-term rental as a landlord against whatever your tenant's made do. And two, from the tenant's side, VRBO, Airbnb, some of those do offer insurance that can be purchased when the unit is booked. And so, on all sides of that transaction, the market is coming in and offering solutions. As to the city interest, there's a tenuous interest in safety that, as Councilman Marriott observed, is present in all those situations. And so, all those products are available. The city could say on an application form, "You are advised that your HOA policy may not cover this. You may want to speak to an insurance company," without making any sort of mandate at all, just to sort of give people a heads up that these products are available and may be potentially useful for them.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, a lot of what I was going to say has already been said. And I agree with, with Mr. Marriott, and I was just going to make the point that you just made, is that BBRO and Airbnb, you know, you can rent, or I'm sorry, you can purchase additional renters' insurance in case you break something. And I think that's where, you know, the market, I think we allow the market to dictate what that looks like. So, if somebody comes and gets a building or if somebody wants to be a, or is a licensed contractor, do we, we require them to have some form of insurance coverage, right? Is that, is that the, is that the model we're trying to follow in this request?
I, I don't necessarily know if that's, I'll let you guys speak to that, but if we have any questions about that specifically related to our current practices in other areas, I'm happy to weigh in.
Yeah, I, I believe we do require insurance for contractors.
Yeah. And so, I, my question was, is that, were we just trying to follow suit of kind of what we do for a, a contractor coming in to get a license and so on and so forth? And it was just, it's just part of the questioning that we already currently have today, so we thought, "Well, it makes sense," or...
The, I guess I, the way that I'm understanding your question is that...
And it's not a good question, I guess.
The way that I'm understanding your question is that you're asking what this particular insurance requirement is patterned off of based on our current practices related to other contractors.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, I, I would assume so. I mean, that's the thing that I, given, I, I don't know what the drafter's intent was in this particular circumstance, but my guess is that it's the same thing. It's the same type of intent. It just provides a little bit of cushion for some of the liability that may be there. Granted, most, if not all of that liability, isn't going to come back on us. So, it's an option that I think Mr. Smetana and Mr. Messenger are looking for direction as to whether or not council even wants to include that as an option. lawful economic activity is never a good thing. However, getting only people who are serious about doing short-term rentals, if you wanna say that, might be, might be also a good thing. For me, I would probably rather see it out. I just don't see why I think, you know, where it behooves the city for this to be any more complicated, or any more difficult than it needs to be. And, and that provision, I think every property owner or renter should, should be educated enough to ensure their own interests at all times, if they so choose. And if they so not choose, then they choose to accept the liability, and, and I think that's probably the way to be. So, anyway, that would be my input on it. I don't know if the rest of the council feels similar or opposite. Either way is fine with me, but just wanna make sure you know what I think.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I wanted to ask, do we know whether or not a lot of the internet businesses that, you know, advertise these short-term rentals, do they require this type of insurance?
Councilman Ford, it's my understanding, two things. One is that short-term rentals are excluded on most homeowner policies, and so you get a rider if you wanna insure the short-term rental as a landlord, against whatever your tenant's made to. And two, from the tenant's side, VRBO, Airbnb, some of those do offer insurance that can be purchased when the unit is booked. And so, on all sides of that transaction, the market is coming in and offering solutions. As to the city interest, there's a tenuous interest in safety that, as Councilman Marriott observed, is present in all those situations. And so, all those products are available. The city could say on an application form, "You are advised that your HOA policy may not cover this. You may wanna speak to an insurance company," without making any sort of mandate at all, just to sort of give people a heads-up that these products are available, and may be potentially useful for them.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, a lot of what I was gonna say has already been said. And I agree with, with Mr. Marriott, and I was just gonna make the point that you just made, is that BBRO and Airbnb, you know, you can rent, or I'm sorry, you can purchase additional renters' insurance in case you break something. And I think that's where, you know, the market, I think we allow the market to dictate what that looks like. So, if somebody comes and gets a building, or if somebody wants to be a, or is a licensed contractor, do we, we require them to have some form of insurance coverage, right? Is that, is that the, is that the model we're trying to follow in this request?
I, I don't necessarily know if that's, I'll let you guys speak to that, but if we have any questions about that specifically related to our current practices in other areas, I'm happy to weigh in.
Yeah, I, I believe we do require insurance for contractors.
Yeah, and so I, my question was, is that, were we just trying to follow suit of kind of what we do for a contractor coming in to get a license, and so on and so forth? And it was just, it's just part of the questioning that we already currently have today, so we thought, "Well, it makes sense," or?
The, I guess I, the way that I'm understanding your question is that-
And it's not a good question, I guess.
The way that I'm understanding your question is that you're asking what this particular insurance requirement is patterned off of, based on our current practices related to other contractors.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, I, I would assume so. I mean, that's the thing that I, given, I, I don't know what the drafter's intent was in this particular circumstance, but my guess is that it's the same thing. It's the same type of intent. It just provides a little bit of cushion for some of the liability that may be there. Granted, most, if not all, of that liability isn't going to come back on us. So, it's an option that I think Mr. Smitana and Mr. Messenger are looking for direction, as to whether or not council even wants to include that as an option.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Mr. Marriott, and, and maybe if it was a question that, or an optional thing, "Hey, you know, you may want," and somebody said it, you know, "You may wanna consider this, or talk to an insurance agent," or, or something. But, again, I think that, that the market has already provided an opportunity for the rentor to purchase additional insurance if they don't want, 'cause they're signing their life away, you know, when they, when they do these, and they're taking the full liability. So, I don't think that it's, I don't think that we really ought to, to concern ourselves whether or not the property has insurance or not. It really falls to the renter and the owner of that property, so.
I guess my reaction is, I'd like to see what other communities are requiring, you know, I don't think we have to totally reinvent the wheel here. You know, I mean, there's a lot of cities that have already gone through this process, so I'd be curious to see what neighboring communities are doing on this.
Right, and, and we did do that research, and a majority of them do require liability insurance. But not, not all, by any stretch of the imagination, but a fair, it is a majority, but it's not, you know, 99% of them. It's probably somewhere around 55% to 60% of them.
Anybody else got input on this insurance issue?
Yes, I would just say, I think the, the question has been raised and formulated very well by Mr. Marriott. I would just ask that perhaps as we talk next, that you bring back some additional information concerning this question, and we take a look at whether this truly is justified. But, I think at this point, we should just think of it as a, as a question that deserves a more full answer.
Okay.
Okay, anybody from Planning Commission? Yes?
I have a question, I guess a bit of a concern. So, for me, my concern with short-term rentals has always been about a potential for outside investors buying up limited housing stock, and then saying, "Okay, you know, we're gonna set up a short-term rental rink." So, my question is, you know, I see the comment, or the, the point about the 25-mile requirement for access. That's for the owner's representative. I'm just curious if maybe we'd wanna make that relative to the actual owner of the property, so they would be somehow bound to the city of Arvada or nearby.
Certainly something we could look at. That starts to restrict sometimes what the owner can do.
Sure.
In terms of how far they can get away from their, their property. So, this was just to allow some other agent that has that responsibility be able to take their place if, if the actual owner is out of town on vacation, or whatever that may be.
Well, maybe not specific to that particular point, but I mean, the, the concern, was that somehow addressed, or thought about, or considered? The outside investor sort of scenario, just coming and buying a bunch of housing stock?
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a concern if, if you allow, if we allow whole-home ownership. Or rental, sorry, whole.
I think the issue is that you could come in and set up a bunch of single-purpose LLCs, and put the registered agent right there, and there's really no way that the city can enforce that. So, it's, it's gonna be difficult. Once you, as Rob said, once you allow that whole-house rental, that's a risk that the city takes. I would say on the insurance question, too, a lot of the cities around that require the insurance also have significantly higher barriers to entry than are proposed here. And so, as we're considering that, it's just another barrier to entry, because they wanna make sure that the number of short-term rentals is relatively small, and that there are tight controls. Here, I think that the, the directions that we've gotten so far have been, sort of, open that up and give people more the free use of their units. And in that case, you know, if you're just putting out barriers to entry, that's a, not been the philosophy that we've thought about so far.
Anything else from Planning Commission?
I have a, a question. It's probably very simple, and should know about it, but a short-term rental, what length of time does that, does it refer to for the renter?
That is anything less than 30 days.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what I do like about this, is, yeah, I like Kevin, the barriers low. I like others up here think that if you're, you know, if you're going on vacation, you typically wanna rent the whole house. You don't wanna be, you know, staying with the homeowner, so I, I like the approach we're taking on that. I like the, the permit requirement. What I don't wanna have is the situation that Denver's just gone through, where somebody had a really nice house that was becoming, in effect, a frat house type of situation, and so the city came in and revoked the permit. You know, you gotta be able to have that hammer over somebody that's abusing the, the neighborhood and, and the intent of these. So, I like the permitting requirement. Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, thank you. I wanna just make a couple of final comments, too. So, I like these, these proposed requirements and where they're going. I think the, allowing people full use of their property is the right thing to do, whether you choose to live in it yourself, rent it short-term, rent it long-term. And so, I think that makes sense. I think the rules, as far as allowing only one short-term rental at a time, addresses a lot of what neighborhood concerns can be, which is turning a, a house into a hotel, into a mini hotel, where there's different people coming and going all the time from, from different places. It also, we still, you know, property owners still retain the flexibility of renting a house out to a whole wedding party, or, or renting a room in their house to help them offset their mortgage. Keep in mind, in these times of, of unaffordable housing, that staying in your house is a challenge for some people. And for those who have been able to build an ADU, that gives them more options. But this also gives people more options if they haven't built an ADU, or don't have any ability to build an ADU. It's a way to, to reduce your costs and stay in your house. So, I think that's a really good idea. I think that, you know, permit issued by the city is absolutely the right way to go, because again, it, anytime that, if there are problem properties, there is a, the city does have some redress. I think collecting the lodger's tax is also very critical, because, you know, short-term rentals in houses should not get an economic advantage over hotels. I think hotels should be able to, to fairly compete in the market, and I think this does it. And so, I think, you know, Mr. Griffith, you brought up the, you know, out-of-town landlords coming in and buying houses and just, just short-term renting them. I think, I, I wouldn't be for any kind of a restriction on that. Again, I think a, a market is good for all of us. Currently, we have a market, of course, that's, that's, that's definitely a seller's market, not a buyer's market, but it won't always be that way. And, and there, we could just as easily find ourselves in times when we would be desirous of outside investment within our community. And I think this strikes a, a balance of that by allowing somebody from outside could own property here and short-term rent it, but they at least have to contract with representation that's close enough by to where the problems get handled, which again, to me, is, is what neighbors are most concerned about, is, is that, that if there are problems, there's a way of, of handling those problems. So, other than the liability insurance thing, which I guess I, you know, I'd love to see a deeper, deeper look at, I think this is right on, and, and I'm happy to see it in this form, and don't have any problems with any of the other parts of it.
I think we have to answer your remaining questions on this of, should we go ahead and get a separate ordinance set up on this, or have it as part of the overall land development code update?
Yeah, so, as you know, we do have short-term rentals out there that are operating today, and we would like to bring them into compliance with the law, one way or the other. And also, you know, we're getting calls daily about short-term rentals. So, the question is, would you like it to, to kinda just track along with the land development code, which can, you know, which will be next, early next year when we get that adopted? Or would you like us to look at doing this in a quicker fashion, as a separate ordinance?
I'd like to see it sooner. Dot?
Same. I'm on the same page as seeing a separate ordinance.
Ms. Marriott?
Same for me.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, separate ordinance.
Mr. Jones?
Agreed.
Ms. Ford?
I'd be fine with that. I have one question, though.
You bet.
So, so basically, I, I guess in my mind, I was thinking of a, a property owner, but I wasn't thinking of it in terms of someone coming in and buying multiple properties, and then using them as short, short-term rentals. So, the idea of someone living in that home, owning the home, but not necessarily living in the home, is not gonna be a requirement?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've got your direction on that?
All right, so we will get that one moving.
We'll look to be seeing a, an ordinance here in the foreseeable future.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, now we're gonna talk about signs.
Signs, and this is really kind of a narrow discussion at this point. We are evaluating the whole sign code as part of the, the whole update. However, we did just adopt it not too long ago. But we understand that there were some issues that came up in the last election cycle with political signs. And so, we wanted to just touch base on that, really understand what those concerns are or were, and look at ways that we can address that, particularly as part of this effort. So, I know, I believe there were some issues with the size of signs that were permitted in certain districts, and maybe the duration that the signs are allowed to stay up.
I think this is the Mark Williams ordinance. Just, just saying.
Might be everyone who's up here.
So, the one-
Yeah, but, but I think I sort of created the problem to begin with, so.
I had to abide by those rules. When I ran, I couldn't even put a sign on my own fence.
Yeah, and so, one of the, one of the issues that we do have to be cognizant of is, we can't single out a particular type of sign. So, you know, we're, to be content neutral, and our sign code is content neutral, so whatever we allow in terms of an election sign, or a political sign, could apply to any advertising sign. So, just to kinda put that out there, as you, as you think through these issues.
Ms. Marriott?
Okay, so I have two things with this. And, and my issue with both of them is the same, and that is, both the size of the sign, and then the duration of the signs. What's contained currently within our code is very much different than what has been our traditions around here, or than what's been legal up to now. And so, let me start with the, with the duration. The yard sign's limited to 60 days. I, I find that wholly inappropriate. Now, I'm fine with a measure that says they've gotta be kept in good order, or, you know, you know, 'cause it doesn't behoove any of us to have a bunch of tattered signs around. But for candidates who would like to run for office, there are those who are less well-known, don't have a head start, and for them, if they wanna work really hard, starting earlier, and getting signs out earlier, and getting more signs out, we shouldn't take that away from them. That's limiting speech, and we should not do that. I realize that these, that these regulations apply to everybody, so they're not singling anybody out. But, we have typically, and I started, when I ran in 2013, started putting yard signs out in the first of August, which, under these rules, would not, would no longer be allowed. And there's always anecdotal people saying, "Ah, you know, gosh, all of a sudden, the campaign starts, campaign signs start blooming." But the reality is, it's, it hasn't been a problem, other than, you know, some, some folks just, just what their personal feelings. But I think the limiting folks' speech by limiting their yard signs is, is not appropriate. So, I would, I would take that out completely. And if there has to be something there, it could be something like yard signs have to be kept in good order, or, or at least make it long enough that it captures our political season. 60 days does not. So, it could be 180 days. That, this, this also brings about people putting a yard sign out, and then says, "Oh, no, I took it down for two days, now I put it back out, my 60 days starts again." We had in this last election, we had one group who targeted another group's signs, and caused lots of problems for the city. And these things being, you know, free speech issues are not easy to deal with, and we oughta have regulations that, that don't allow that to happen. So, that's number one. That's with the, with the yard signs. Two, with the larger signs. So, again, I think this can be anything, but what's here now is very much against what we've traditionally done here. And so, you know, I, I would rather see something that talks about a, a size of a sign, maybe based on the, the amount of frontage that it's on, or something like that, would be much more apropos than, than, than what we have. If you look at large campaign signs, four-by-eight campaign signs, all of us have put them out. All of us have put them out in lots of places that, that is not covered by this. We've all done it for a long time, and it hasn't caused any problem in our, in our community. In fact, not knowing who you're gonna vote for is probably a bigger problem. I think, I think as a candidate, candidates should have lots of latitude for that short amount of time that a campaign season is, to be able to, to accurately, you know, advertise themselves. And obviously, they have to get consent from a property owner, all kinds of things. I know in the last election, there were several large signs that were put up, that somebody complained about, that, that then that person just cut those big signs into small ones, and kinda pixelated them, and separated them. And we, we shouldn't have rules that'll, that, that encourage that kinda silliness, when it comes to free speech. And particularly, I wanna see every candidate have a fair shot at making their case to their fellow citizens to, to be elected, whether it's at the city level, the county, the state, the national level. And, and we shouldn't have things like this, that really go so much against the way we used to do it, without there being a demonstrated problem.
And you're, you're talking more specifically towards those signs in residential-
Correct.
Districts.
Yep.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I'm just wondering if you'd remind us again, what's the definition of a site sign, the size? I've just forgotten.
Yeah, that would be a four-by-eight, 32 square feet.
Four-by-eight, so, something that large.
Yeah.
And what you're encompassing here also would include fence signs? I mean, we're talking, we, the narrative we have, we're just referring to yard signs, but we're also referring to things that would be hanging on a fence?
Well, yeah, except those would only be allowed, that, that size is only allowed currently in a commercial or industrial zone.
Okay, so.
Not in a residential district.
Thank you.
So, that's another issue. Yeah, and the, the biggest concern with dealing with that in a residential zone, allowing a bigger sign, where we used to be able to say during, you know, an election sign, we can single those out, and say during an election, you can have this type of sign, or that type of sign, is now, because we have to be content neutral, if we're gonna allow a four-by-eight sign in a residential area, it could be an advertisement for Bob's Automotive two miles away. And so, that's, that's the only concern we have in terms of how that works, in terms of an election versus, you know, everyday type situation. And that's why we did restrict things in residential districts.
But the reality is, we've, as, as Mr. Marriott has said, we've seen a lot of folks have signs on back of fences, and, you know, I think along, you know, picture Ward Road, Eightieth Avenue, you couldn't do it, but I've seen others do it. You know? So, I, I come down where, where Mr. Marriott is, is, you know, it really wasn't a problem before. And frankly, when we did permit them, we didn't have Joe's Garage wanting to put up signs on, you know, on the back of, of residential fences and stuff. So, I, I would, I would personally like to go back to the way it used to be.
I agree. I, I agree, because, and, and I think that if people have permission from the owners of those fences, I think that during election season, they should be allowed. I mean, if we look at our solicitation rules, we, we allow politicians and nonprofits to come to doors, even though we don't, you know, even though people are legally within their rights to have no solicitor signs for, you know, businesses. And I think, you know, for, for election, I, I agree with Mr. Marriott. I think that that really does take away free speech, and, and the ability to advertise. We're, we're public servants. We're, we're not in business. It's, I think it's different.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to concur with my colleagues. I think that whatever we can do to change that, and for, for an election cycle, I think that's a very important thing to do. And I don't know how you draw it out differently, or, you know, to your point, I mean, I get it, you know, having a big four-by-eight sign in my front yard for my business, that seems a little different, and odd, and awkward. I certainly wouldn't put a four-by-eight sign in my front yard for my campaign either, but- but, you know.
I think your HOA might prohibit it.
Right, the HOA is gonna have something to say about that, too. So there are some other governing facts, factors with regards to those HOAs. And I know that there are areas of our community that don't have an HOA. So I, I think we need to be cognizant of an election cycle specifically, and it happens every year.
So, is, is around 180 days the right amount of time? And maybe we can kind of build something around 180 days?
Well, again, I probably created the problem here.[636.16][636.16](Laughter). My, my first campaign for mayor, I think I started on the Fourth of July, which was probably a little early.
Less than 180 days.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think the problem was the number of signs.[648.16][648.16](Laughter). You know, if you took the total square footage of all those signs, immeasurable.
Hey, it worked. Mr. Devon, you were the chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think, again, and perhaps Rob and Todd were gonna ask this question, but I, I think a separate ordinance would be necessary here if we're looking at something for the 2019 election season.
Yes.
And, Mr. Devon, I would weigh in, or for my colleagues here, I would weigh in and say, I think this is something we ought to do as, as soon as we possibly could. I, you know, my intention would be to have sign regulations not have any impact whatsoever in this coming election season. And particularly, I have interest in not seeing the city be placed in the position of, of used as a, as a weapon between rival campaigns to, to, to make their, to sway elections one way or another. And so I, I think the sooner we can do this, the better. Try to make, make this not impact this upcoming campaign season.
Sure, yeah, okay. We will work on that. And to, to the mayor's point, I think it was the city of Gilbert, Arizona, that created this problem.
Okay, fair enough.
So we'll take you off the hook on that one.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Anything from Planning Commission on this one?
Mr. Mayor, so I, I argued unsuccessfully when we did this a couple of years ago, that we shouldn't have ordinances that we can't enforce. And I think that the, the timeline is just something we can't enforce, because I, I can claim that I wandered out at 2:00 in the morning and took my sign down and put it up at 6:00 a.m., and my clock starts over again. So I, I would personally be against any time limit, because I don't think it's enforceable, and I, I don't think it's a good idea for our city to ever have an ordinance that's not enforceable realistically. The, the other suggestion I would offer about the large signs is perhaps we, we take public safety into concern and consider having larger signs on collectors and arterials. A small sign on the back of, of a, a home on Eightieth, let's say, it's somebody driving 40, 45 miles an hour down Eightieth and trying to read a small sign, or, or being distracted by a small sign is probably not very safe. That's, and we have a number of roads like that in town. And so we've, I think, in effect, created a, a public safety issue by, by pushing small signs in, in places where it's not appropriate to have them. So if perhaps there was a middle ground, to me, I think is, is considering on the speed of travel on those roads and, and the classification of the roads may be the way, rather than the square footage of, of the property.
Okay, well, we'll have an ordinance discussion on this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try and get something together, and it may be worthwhile having another short workshop just on, on this topic. And once we get something crafted, make sure everything, everybody's good with it. All right?
Okay, zoning districts.
Zoning districts, yeah. Now we get into the meat of-
Oh, good.
The land development code. So we wanted to run through quickly the various zone districts that we're proposing. Again, the idea is we're going back through the code, essentially renaming or introducing, renaming and introducing new zone districts that hopefully make more sense to people, are a little more lenient in terms of the uses that are allowed in some instances. And in terms of residential, though, protect, some of those new districts would help protect the existing character of, of the neighborhoods. So, as you look at the next slides, these are just gonna be a synopsis of what you have in your packet, which is much more detailed. We wanted to just kind of hit on the districts, and then some of the key features of those districts. And then if you have any questions about the detailed information in your packets, we certainly can help you out with those as well. So, starting with the, the largest lots, the residential agriculture, this will replace the A1 district that we currently have. It still provides the semi-rural character. We keep essentially the same standards that we have for those particular lots today. The big difference is, right now, we require a five-acre lot to be a residential, an A1 property, and we have a lot of properties that are zoned A1 that are below the five acres. So we're proposing just to reduce that to one acre in size, and then we get rid of a lot of the non-conforming situations we have out there.
Ms. Ford?
So Rob, I have a couple of questions on the agricultural. When I first saw the barn height, I questioned that as being the same size as the ADU. I've seen a lot of barns that were quite large. I, I don't know how tall they were, but is there a reason, or, so that, and also the number of accessory buildings on agricultural sites, I'm wondering how these numbers have been arrived at? And looking at the accessory buildings, is this in relation to the number of animals? Are we discussing this with people who really have agricultural businesses, or farms, or...
Yeah, not, not so much businesses as they are, it's just kind of the hobby farm-type situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in terms of the building height, we have seen that, you know, generally, people on larger properties do like to see, have larger structures, especially if they do keep animals, you know, they want to have a hayloft for the, the horses. So the 35 seems to work, and it seems to be pretty consistent with the height of barns that we see around, around the city. So that's fairly consistent with what we allow today and what we've seen to date.
So you have 30 here, though, and, and I was wondering if you were looking to have them be lower than the houses? As we, as the committee had discussed, the ADUs, you know, that they should be lower than the primary residence, but in terms of an agricultural setting, that's not always the case. And I'm wondering if we would be constricting people in terms of animals and in terms of the needs of their animals, that kind of thing?
As opposed to just sticking at the 35 that we have today versus the 30?
Yeah. And, and the number of accessory buildings, too? Because if, you know, a person had, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't remember the animal requirements on these, but I'm, my question is, are we relating the number of animals to the maximum number of accessory buildings?
Uh, yeah.
Since a lot of people use their accessory buildings for animals?
Yeah, to, to a certain extent, but we've also found people on larger lots just say, "Hey, can I have a little extra garage for my car? You know, I, I keep vintage cars and I need a separate garage." And, and on those larger lots, it certainly seems to make sense to allow some additional square footage in terms of accessory structures, because they're tend, they tend to be kind of, you know, spread out, and the larger the lot, the more spread out. So the impact is, is not as great as if you were talking about that number of, of structures on a, you know, quarter acre lot, obviously.
Right, so what, I guess my question is, is could there be more allowed, depending on the number of animals that a person has? Or are we just limit, are we limiting just because it's a good number to limit, too?
Yeah, I, I think we tried to, to scale it to what we've kind of seen out there in the older properties that predate our current restrictions on accessory structures. And so we just tried to calibrate it towards what we've seen in those situations. So there, there, there's no magic necessarily, other than just kind of evaluating what's out there today.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
So, how closely does this mirror the county's kind of residential agricultural zoning district?
That I do not know off the top of my head.
And, and does, to kind of go off of what Mrs. Ford was saying, does the A1 zoning district require a farm animal?
No.
Okay, I didn't think it did. So it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to have a farm animal-
No.
-to have this zoning district.
Correct.
Or to be in the zoning district. I buy a house or a little farm, now I gotta buy a cow.
No.
No, no, no. That, no, that wasn't my question. My question was really, and maybe I didn't ask it right. I, I want to make sure, because I, I received some comments about the number that is required, or maximum number required, that it may actually be too little, depending on the situation. So in other words, if, if say, you know, I, I think about a new business that just came into District One, for example, that's a, an animal rescue place. Let's say, for example, that an animal rescue place comes into a five-acre property, and they have a number of animals. Now, maybe they can't do this, because it's considered a business, but this particular is in a residential. Maybe they have a number of different animals, and they need more accessory structures, and they have the land to support that. Is there a reason why, you know, we would limit that on a large piece of agricultural property?
The only, the only concern would be impact on adjacent properties. And, and we could certainly try and see if there's a way to calibrate it to a lot coverage versus a number of units, something that makes sense. You know, you can have 10% of your lot covered by accessory structures, and then it, it still scales with the property, but it doesn't necessarily restrict you to the number. We could certainly look at an option like that.
Yeah, because I think it's a little, I think the agricultural situation is a little bit different than just a, you know, just a regular residential situation with smaller lots. You know, there, there are a lot of possibilities that could happen on a land, a piece of land like that, I think. And it may, I, I would not want it to be so restrictive that a person couldn't do a little bit more if they wanted to on their land.
Before I-
Not that I think there's gonna be a lot of five-acre properties, but, you know, for the few that we're gonna have, hopefully.
Before I yield my time to Ms. Ford, (Laughter) one other follow-up question. Because it feels like we obviously have a lot of unincorporated Jefferson County in Arvada, or at least in parts of Arvada. How many, and you may not know the answer to this question, but how many acres or how many areas do we have that will fall under this A1 zoning? Kind of getting, again, please don't take my time, to Mrs. Ford's question about the dog rescue that she was referring to. Do we, do we have a lot of area?
We, we really don't in the, in the grand scheme of things. Most of what people think of the agricultural lots in Arvada are actually unincorporated counties. So we don't have a ton of areas that have A1 zoning today, but we have enough that we want to make sure it works for them.
And that's why I asked the question around what, you know, how closely does this mirror the counties? And they don't have to be the same, but I was just curious more, are there things that our residential agricultural zoning requirements either limit property use that the counties doesn't, and, you know, because, you know, if there were benefits for someone to come into Arvada, if they were right on the edge and there was a way for them to come into Arvada into the same zoning, you know, is that a benefit to the city or not? I don't know.
Sure, okay.
Okay, next.
All right. Next up, we have kind of the, what we anticipate will be probably the largest zone district in the city, and that is the residential neighborhood. And the intent here is to basically look at all the residential that's in the existing developed portion of the city, and put them into this one-zone district with various sub-districts that adjust by lot size. And also, as part of this, is really to try and get away from the various residential planned unit developments that we have out there, that are really hard to administer, because they all have different setbacks, lot coverages, and so on. So we're, we're really trying to standardize all of those districts, and hopefully fit most of those properties into one of these six sub-districts by lot size. And as part of that, we are being a little more lenient, hopefully in terms of lot coverage, to allow people to still be able to do some things and expand on their property. The setbacks are gonna be fairly similar to what we have today in the various zone districts that align with those lot sizes. And then the other piece of that that we're looking at is potentially lowering the height, overall height of a home in those districts, to be more compatible with what we have today, which most homes are in the 27-ish foot height range, a two-story home. And right now, our 35-foot height limit, you know, applies across all zone districts. So you could potentially build a 35-foot tall house in the middle of an established neighborhood, and that's one thing we've heard that people would like to potentially get rid of, so that we have a more consistent pattern to development in the existing portion of the city.
Okay, Mr. Marriott?
Let me ask you a question about this. So I, I like this approach, but like our good friend, Mr. Allard, would say, the devil's in the details. And so just kind of looking through this table that you put, I, you know, I think the, making the height proportional to the lot size is probably a really appropriate way to go. So within the table like this, RN4 probably should have a lower building height than the RN 12.5 or the 7.5. And in the table, we have it doesn't. So are you gonna look more deeply into that? Are you looking for kind of direction from us that this is the way we want to go, and you'd come up with some recommendations, or how would that go about?
Yeah, so, so the 28-foot is, is about what you're gonna typically find for a two-story home. So that's, that's pretty consistent with the character, so I'm not sure we'd want to lower that.
Are you talking about just make it, on the table I have, the primary building height maximum on all of these says 35 feet?
Uh, I, yeah, I think you're looking, there's kind of two sections of that table. The upper portion of that table, if you're on page five-
Yep.
The upper portion is residential. The, the lower portion is for non-residential uses, like places of assembly, other civic buildings that would be allowed in residential districts.
Oh, maybe I'm looking, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the upper part, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got it, yeah, sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
The only, tell me about, within all of these, are currently, don't we allow a two-car garage, or a two, a double height, you know, a two-story garage building if the house is a two-story? But if the house is a one-story, we only allow one story? This would be a change to where all garages would just be one story?
Uh, no, it would allow all garages, yeah, well, to, to have a 16-foot height, so.
So a garage is an, is a accessory building, correct?
Correct, correct.
So they would all just be 16 feet tall, so they'd all, this would further restrict what we have?
Uh, well, what we have today says either 16 or 18.
But if it's, if it's a two-story house, can you not have a garage that's two full floors tall?
If it's attached, you can.
If it's detached?
If it's detached, you, the only, I think the only way you can is if it's an ADU with it.
Okay.
But otherwise, it's, it's 18 feet. So there's only a couple of feet of difference in that.
Right, okay. So this is, this is essentially the situation-
Yeah.
Situation we have now.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I guess I'm good with it, then.
Ms. Ford?
I have a couple of questions in this. Is it okay to address them now? Are you with this? Okay. So, for example, on page 10, where we talk about the mixed-use urban, this is a zoning district, it says, "That promotes urban character and non-vehicular modes of transportation." So how many non-vehicular modes of transportation do we have? We have train, bus, what else? Anything else?
Well, yeah, those are, those are the two primary, obviously, walking and biking, but we're really talking about that have some kind of mass transit accessibility.
Okay. And then when it talks about bus lines with frequent service, do we have a definition for frequent service?
That's usually 15 minutes or less headway.
Okay, 15 minutes or less. And do we have a map of the city with our bus lines that are identified as a frequent service?
Essentially, today, that's just on Wadsworth.
Just on Wadsworth? And on that same page, where it says townhome, multiplex, and multifamily, do we consider condos, townhomes?
Uh, well, it could be. Townhome, or condos are just a- Townhome, or condos are just a form of ownership. They can be any type of actual dwelling style. So you could have a townhome that could, it's either own fee simple, or you could just have it condoed and, you know, you own the air rights in the middle and, or between the walls and the exterior is maintained in common. So it's really just the ownership type, not the style of product.
Okay. I have a couple more questions.
Okay, it seems, is this jumping ahead?
Yeah.
Am I jumping?
Well, we've got a couple more residential districts to go through before we get to the mixed-use.
I'll stop then, and then I'll wait until you catch up with me.
Okay.
Question on the residential neighborhoods. I know there's some discussion of microhousing. Is this where that would go if we were to ever do microhousing?
Uh, no, we are not proposing that within the RN district, but these next residential districts that we're talking about.
On, in the residential neighborhood district, there will be limits as to the maximum size of the house in terms of height, in terms of cover, but not the minimum. So if you could make it work and you had a quarter acre and you wanted to put 400 square feet on it, you could do that. But people generally don't do that.
But I'm talking small lot?
No, it's not part of this.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be as we move into the next zone districts, which were intended, are intended for new development.
Okay.
So basically, the next three districts.
Mr. Marriott's got a question before me.
Just, just quickly, one last question on these. Since these would be the zone districts, it would be not new development, but existing neighborhoods, these would be applied over. I think about a place, kind of like Old Town or west of Old Town where I live, where there's a whole big variety of lot sizes. There's 4,000 square foot lots, and there's 8,000 square foot lots, and some in between. What would, how would, how would the city go about applying these districts over that? It certainly wouldn't be a property to property.
No, we, we would look at what is.
Is it a preponderance? Is it, it would be whatever the smallest one is, or whatever the biggest one is? How would, how would you do that?
We will, we'll have to take a look at that, but we're, we're gonna have to evaluate it kind of in an area-by-area basis, but we wouldn't zone on a lot by lot. We would try to.
Of course.
We would try to do that in larger chunks to the, and reduce, keep to a minimum the amount of non-conformities we would be creating. So if, if there's a large chunk of home, of lots that are 6,000, we would zone it to 6,000 square foot, even though there might be 8,000 square feet, square foot lots. And you might get one 5,500 square foot lot. So we would try to keep the non-conformities to a minimum, but still zone it sort of appropriate to the area.
So, critical one, and not, by non-conformity, Rob doesn't mean legal non-conformity. So what, the way these are set up is whatever you have now is legally conforming, no matter how big or small it is, in whatever residential neighborhood zone it would be. So you accept the existing condition how it is. So the strategy is to say, whatever that lot size is, is kind of the average that if you were to re-subdivide something into that size, or create a new lot at that size, it wouldn't be disruptive. So if most of the lots are 8,000, and you got a few 4,000s here and there, and you don't want it to turn into a neighborhood of 4,000, then you'd make it somewhere around 6, 7 and 1/2, something like that, so that if you, you would have to package up and then re-subdivide, you'd essentially end up with the same condition that you started with. So these lot areas apply to new lots, and the existing lots are what they are.
Right. So if they end up, if the new zoning ends up being kind of a bigger average lot size than a lot of the lots, nobody's harmed. There's nobody who loses, loses anything that way. It's more to protect the current condition to stay that way.
Correct. Your current situation is there are loads of non-conforming lots all over the city. Your new situation would be there are no non-conforming lots in the RN districts, and the ability to subdivide new lots in the existing fabric would be difficult to do that, so that you end up basically with the patterns that you have on the ground now. That's the intention.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the, the R6, I'll kind of maybe talk about these all together. The R6, R13, R24 would be zone districts for new residential development. And the, the 6, 13, and 24 just relates to the dense, the maximum density that would be allowed in those districts. So the R6, six units per acre, 13 units per acre, and then 24 units per acre. And within those, we would have what we're calling the housing palette, which would allow you to develop a, a variety of different types of products in those zone districts, just as long as you didn't exceed that density. So if you had a lot, an area where you could do, you know, six single-family homes, if you desired, you could do six townhome units with a lot of open space around those. So you, you're able to kind of mix and match product types within a particular area. And that would apply to all three types of districts, with the, the difference being, obviously, the higher the density, the greater variety of product types you can use. So in terms of that, that housing palette, you can have small urban lots, you could have urban lots, small general lots, all with increasing lot sizes, but, you know, just a variety of different products. These would all be detached products. You could get up to kind of your more typical suburban. You could also have duplex units, townhomes. And then as you go into the higher-density districts, the 13 and 24, you could also potentially introduce multiplex, which are multifamily buildings that are intended to look like one large kind of mansion home. And then you can also, as you go up to into the R24, do your more typical multifamily apartment-style development. So all of those types would be allowed, depending on the density that would be allowed in those particular areas.
Okay, any questions from council on this one? Planning Commission?
Okay, now we get into the, the mixed-use districts. The first one is the mixed-use neighborhood. And that particular district, we see is kind of the smaller-scale development that we're seeing occur along Ralston, for example. So it's kind of a mix of older homes that have been converted to commercial use, and some smaller office buildings. There may be some instances in the future, and we're not intending to map these now, but in the future where you may find a collector-collector intersection in the middle of a neighborhood where somebody says, okay, a smaller-scale little retail development may be appropriate there, they could come in and request that zoning. And, and it would be something that would still be compatible with the scale of a residential neighborhood, but is in an area where maybe traffic volumes have increased to the point where a single-family detached residential unit in that location just doesn't make sense anymore. But as we see it today, it would be in areas that are generally P1, B1, or B2. And again, Ralston is a great example, where that's a lot of P1 property, and this would be a good model to allow a little variety of uses, of use on those smaller properties. The next one then, well, actually, a couple of topics to talk about as we look at this in, in general. The first one being, we are talking about having build to, or build, sorry, frontage zones. So you'd have to build your building within those frontage zone areas that are allotted for the various mixed-use building types. And that's intended in some areas to make sure we have buildings pulled up to the street with parking located on the side or behind those, those structures. We would also, as it relates to these districts, have the height transition zones. So if you're adjacent to a single-family zone district, the adjacent commercial or mixed-use property would have to be set back a certain distance as you went up in height. And basically, at this point, we've kind of toyed with a number of different ways of looking at this. And this particular, the particular model that's in the code right now, basically, today, we have the 45-degree angle bulk plane setbacks for, for height in our code today. We basically tried to take that and just simplify it. So the numbers you see here, so the, the 25-foot setback before you could go to the full height in an MXN, the 30-foot setback before you could go to full height in S, and then 45 in the U and T, pretty much lines up with that 45-degree bulk plane angle that we have today. We just tried to make it simpler, so now you don't have to figure out the 45-degree angle. It's just in these districts, here's the setbacks, before you could go to the maximum height.
That makes sense.
So we tried to take a middle ground from what we heard at the open houses and with council the last time.
I have a question on this one about the, the maximum height. What do you call it, the maximum overall height in the MXU district? That that's, on, on the table here, I think it's 65 feet.
Yeah.
We're currently, without it being a, a PUD or something, we don't allow heights over 35 feet.
35 feet, correct.
So this would be a use by right of up to 65 feet?
Yes, it would be with, with restrictions, and we wanna restrict the distance to nearby residential where this transition zone would take place. Also, these would be sites that would, we would look at zoning that particular zone district to kind of redevelopment of existing shopping centers that makes sense to redevelop. So these are on arterial corridors. Hopefully, you know, again, as we map through it, go through the mapping, they would not be located in necessarily close proximity to residential. And if they are, the transition takes place. And we would also look at potentially transitional uses between an established residential neighborhood and an arterial street to kind of provide buffering. And kind of in a similar way to what we looked at, what was it, last week or two weeks ago, when the, the Village of Five Parks parcel was in front of you, where we used, where they used the duplex as a transition to the commercial. It would be similar, could be similar to that, that we would see development.
So my only comment on that would be is that, the, something like a 65-foot height use by right, I think would, would be probably somewhat controversial, no, no matter where it was. If you picture the Kmart property down here on Ralston Road, and a bank wanting to build a 65-foot or a six-story, five or six-story building there. Are there strategies or ways where, you know, I think the community needs to be able to weigh in on those? And we, on this council, have approved, you know, some six-story heights. It's not that we haven't been willing to do that, but, but it seems to me that, that there ought to be some format by which the community has at least the ability to weigh in on something that's, again, pretty far out of what we're used to around here. It's almost double what we're used to as a maximum allowed building height by right. And anything in the process, or, I mean, I know we use the PUD process for that now, but, or, you know, the, if not that, then where these MXU districts are, because that's the only one that allows this much height, where they are become really, 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 really important.
Yeah.
Any, any thoughts on other options there, other than? I, I'd hate to see this one get away from us. I can picture the first time a developer comes forward with a 65-foot height in a place that people don't expect, something like that. Whether there's adjacent residential property or not, you know, along Ralston Road, along Ward Road, along, what? 65 feet's a big height along all those places, and it seems to me that that ought to be very deliberative, very done, very carefully, and, and with the input of the community.
Certainly, and I think there's kind of two, two prongs to that. One is deciding exactly what the parameters where that could be built would be in terms of setbacks. Does there have to be a transition between? Does it have to be, you know, 200 feet from, from a property, a property boundary where there's residential zoning? And then also, where we would map those. So we wanna make sure we're looking at both of those together, and that the community is seeing both of those pieces when we go to them at the next, you know, open houses and before we adopt the code.
What, what about something in the process that, you know, maybe the, the maximum overall height there is 35 feet, but could be 65 feet with approval from, from Planning Commission and City Council or something? You know, I mean, you're talking about, you know, giving the public lots of opportunity to weigh in on where those zone districts might be. But like with a lot of things that happen in, in public process, the, and I'm thinking of a roadway out west, it's, it's, once it starts happening, it's, oh, I didn't know about it, you know, and, and one opportunity to weigh in on where those might be all through the whole city at the time of rezoning or, you know, new land development code is implemented, might not be adequate for, you know, all of a sudden, then on your daily commute, there's gonna be a building that's dramatically taller than what you expect.
Well, you know, if we, we essentially have that model today, obviously, where you can ask for a height exception. So it's certainly, you know, we could look at that route. We were simply trying to figure out, through this effort, can we identify those locations where they're appropriate, so there's never a question? And we can have, you know, somebody come in and propose that, and it gets developed, because everybody's generally comfortable with that, those locations where it could be allowed.
I guess, I'm nervous that there are any of those, where people are generally okay with 65-foot tall buildings. Can we think about that further, maybe, maybe do a little bit more?
Well, and maybe, and maybe give us a map that shows where you're thinking.
Where that, where that might be proposed, and, and maybe have us weigh in again on that again. That's one, that's one, of this, that's the only, that's the part that makes me the most nervous of this, this part of it.
Okay.
And I think there's some parts in Candellas, right, that, that have some pretty big.
They allow 180 feet, yeah, in Candellas.
Okay, Ms. Ford.
Well, and actually, it says the maximum height, Mr. Marriott, can be increased to 80 feet. And so I have a question in terms of the rooftop and upper level deck amenities. Is there any way that we can, you know, we've talked about this shadowing issue with tall buildings. Is there any way that we can prevent shadowing in these open space areas? Because to me, a shaded open space area is not really, you know, favorable in my mind. I don't know. Is there a way we could do that to keep, you know, somebody from just, you know, using a piece of land that really, you know, it's open space, but it's not really attractive open space in the sense that, I mean, I'm sure some people like the shade, but for, you know, skin cancer issues, but.
Well, we could, we could certainly, you know, we're talking about applying this to a residential zone district. We could certainly look at applying it to a park district as well. But if it's just a parcel of land that has some other zoning on it, another mixed-use zone parcel, we wouldn't say that you couldn't build a, you know, you couldn't do that, because you could have an equivalent building on that adjacent property. So, but we could certainly, if protecting parks and open space that's dedicated to the city is important, we can certainly look at buffers to those.
Well, and, and even if somebody had an open, you know, had a rooftop, say, that was considered open space, and then another, you know, building came in that would take away that, you know, again, would shade it, would, would we allow something like that?
In that instance, yes, because that would be kind of the private open space and that, you know, hopefully, they, the developer of that particular building understands what can happen on the adjacent property and would plan accordingly.
Okay.
Okay, next.
All right. So just basically, the difference between the various zone districts, or the mixed-use districts and beyond the neighborhood. Suburban would allow you to do a little more suburban character, but allow to mix uses, so you can have a variety of housing types as well as commercial properties, either mixed vertically in a mixed-use building, or horizontally on the property. The mixed-use urban, obviously, would be more urban and more, potentially more intense with higher, with taller buildings potentially, and again, a more intense mix of uses. And then the MXT, which would be transit, would be at our station areas. And then where we have frequent bus service, again, that's gonna be a fairly small area of the city today, and we don't necessarily anticipate that changing drastically anytime soon in terms of having additional transit service. But one area that we're, we're looking at for that would be potentially kind of the new town area south of Old Town to I-70 along Wadsworth, as that could potentially redevelop in the future. This might be the appropriate zone district in that area. And why we've said the height here is to be determined, is that we may want to, you know, as we plan through that area in the future, we may want to look at areas where it's appropriate to have a taller building, but it may be very pinpointed at those locations, and so we can do that either through. And so we can do that either through a height overlay zone or have a sub-district associated with this where a taller building or buildings could be located.
Keep moving.
Keep moving, all right. So.
I'm getting a little concerned that we're getting so overloaded here that we're wearing down.
Yeah, yeah.
So we may want, in the future, we may not want to try to cover so much in one night.
Yep.
I mean, it just, anything from Planning Commission on this before I move on?
We agree, this is a lot.
That you're getting worn down?
Unless we have snacks.
I just said, speak for yourself, I'm just getting warmed up.
We don't all have the stamina of you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All right.
Because we've got a lot more still to cover.
Yeah, and, you know, we, if you'd like, we can maybe get through the commercials or get through the zone districts and talk about parking the next time if that's deeper.
Keep moving.
Keep moving on this one. Okay, so, the Old Town, basically, all the Old Town districts would remain exactly the same. We're not proposing any significant changes to the Old Town districts as part of this. The commercial general, again, we did talk about that in terms of self-storage. These would be areas where we don't want to necessarily allow a mix of uses with residential as that, as a component of that. These would be strictly for commercial uses. Still along arterial streets, but we definitely know of a few areas where it's probably not appropriate to start mixing residential with those districts. And so that's kind of the difference there. The industrial light is very similar to our I-1 district today in terms of uses, coverage. We would allow maybe a little more flexibility, talk about some other design standards that may allow some more flexibility in terms of the design of the sites, but it's going to be very similar to what we have today, and would also be used in the area where we have Clear Creek zoning today, as well as the industrial general, which would be very similar to our I-2, the more intense uses. Again, it can kind of overlap our existing I-2 as well as some areas in Clear Creek where we allow more intense uses. And then finally, the parks and open space district.
Yes, I just want to interject here, a quick question. When you mentioned Clear Creek, I just, we're proceeding with doing away with all the Clear Creek zoning?
That's correct.
That will not exist at all before, I mean, not before, that will not exist if this should be adopted.
That is correct.
Okay. I just want, I thought that was the case, just wanted to clarify, make sure.
Yeah, and we have had meetings with the property owners in that area, as well as the county. We had a big meeting, oh, boy, a year ago, to talk to them about that. And every, everybody who was there was in general agreement with getting rid of the Clear Creek district and working through these other districts with that.
Thank you.
All right, and then finally, we would have a park and open space district that would be those dedicated city-owned properties. And then we would still allow for planned unit developments, but we would make sure it only applies to very unique circumstances, and we would kind of, we would build the criteria around unique situations, so we're not dealing with somebody who just says, I want to vary my setbacks, I'll do a PUD, and we go through that whole system. The idea is really to have people build in-standard zone districts where we know what the process is, what's expected, heights, setbacks, everything, and reserve the PUDs for those very unique circumstances. As Todd always brings up, you know, you get a Topgolf or something like that, that's completely out of the realm, it's not really a building, what is it? That's where you would have kind of the PUD district play into it.
Mr. McGough.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, it just seems to me that the primary criterion there is the first one, that no other zoning district would apply. Even if the other three might be met, I think that if it fits into a zoning district, it would seem to me that it ought to go into a zoning district with all that we're doing in this regard with the land development code.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what we're trying to gear.
So I would hope that we wouldn't have one that the other three criteria would apply, but we go, we step beyond the first one itself.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything from Planning Commission on this? Yes, Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some comments. You've got all the stakeholders together now in the process, so I think the, and you were talking about the height overlay zones and maps, so you can talk through the stakeholders with where would the sixty, eighty-foot buildings go, get comments at public houses or open houses with the public. So I think it's a good time to do that, and I think the other thing was the revision to the bulk plane process, which we've seen a couple of times in the Planning Commission and the height transition zone. Lot easier, the diagrams are very easy to see and understand, so I think those are good changes.
Okay, I'll see any other points?
All right.
Or questions?
So then the last section is to really talk about parking. And as a general rule, what we've tried to do is to work with, for the commercial uses primarily, to try and gear everything towards the square footage of the building on the site versus the variety of different ways that we calculate parking today. Can be on number of employees, can be on number of seats, it can be on square footage of the building. So we were trying to come up with parking ratios that fit that square footage, so it's consistent throughout the code as much as we can. And we have compared what we're proposing to all the other kind of local communities around us, suburban communities, in terms of what their parking minimums are, and just tried to calibrate across the board to be very similar to what is kind of the average across those communities. The one piece that we did want to spend a little more time on today is the parking for multifamily, which is always kind of a significant issue when projects come before the council and Planning Commission. And so we did try to do a little more research into residential parking for multifamily. And we looked at what we have on the far right side of the diagram there compared to other local suburban communities, so Westminster, Wheat Ridge, Littleton, and so on. And we're looking at how they calculate it based on bedrooms, where we calculate it on units. So even if you have a one-bedroom unit today, you've got to have two, two and a quarter or two and a half parking spaces for a one-bedroom. And as you can see, as we compare that to other communities, that's kind of extremely high compared to what others do when they do it on a per-bedroom count. So they range anywhere from, in transit zones, you know, half a space, three-quarters of a space, to one and, to one and a half spaces for a one-bedroom. As you see, the Lakewood example has the two, but that's actually the maximum that's allowed for any unit in Lakewood. So it's a little bit different animal, but if you look at the rest of the communities, usually, the one and a half space for a one-bedroom is pretty typical. When you go to a two-bedroom, again, we calculate on the unit, so it doesn't really make a difference the number of bedrooms. So, but when you look at the two-bedrooms, starts to increase a little bit, but they're still below what we currently require in terms of parking. And again, this is, you know, a wide variety of communities locally that we've looked at. So what we have proposed is to base our calculations instead of on units to the bedroom mix. And so you might have a building that's primarily one-bedrooms, and so you're actually, in terms of comparing to our current code, you'd have a lower parking requirement, but as you can see, you'd still have for a one-bedroom, one and a half spaces per u, per unit in that situation. So you would have guest parking figured into that. And then with a project with a mix of uses, you'd have anywhere from the one and a half for a one-bedroom, two spaces for a two-bedroom, and two and a quarter spaces for a three-bedroom. And as that's mixed together as an average across the development, that should adequately address the guest park, or the resident parking and the guest parking.
Ms. Ford.
That's kind of the big change.
Yeah, Ms. Ford.
So one thing that I struggle, if you'd go back to that previous slide, one thing that I struggle with is, is looking at, you know, we just talked about how you described it there, the bus service that's, frequent service. And you just told me before that the only place that we have in Arvada that has a frequent bus service is Wadsworth. Now, I would, I would be interested in looking at Lakewood and Aurora in particular, and probably even Anglewood and Broomfield, to find out, you know, in comparison to our city versus those cities. You know, I'm also thinking about our, because I just looked at it today, was a pie chart of where people commute to in Arvada. And so we have the majority of people commuting to Denver. We have thirty-eight percent of our population commuting to all these other cities that weren't listed, and the ones that were listed were Boulder, Golden, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge. So when I first saw, you know, the multiplex, and we have one-bedroom units with one and a half cars, or one and a half spaces for parking, I'm still struggling whether we're really realistically planning for the reality of our commutation in Arvada and in comparison to these other cities, and whether that's realistic, because we have, we have a proposed train that's coming that's going to bring people to Golden, I believe, and Denver. And certainly, they can, you know, move around if they go into Denver. But what other, what other ways do people have for transporting themselves other than the car and maybe a bicycle, which is really not that practical for most people? So I don't even consider bike travel, since we only have about two percent of people traveling by bicycle anyway in Arvada. So I'm still struggling with this, you know, are we really planning for enough vehicles that are the reality of our city and how we travel?
Sure, that's certainly something we can, we can look at. But these numbers that you're seeing here are not, there are some of them that mention the transit-oriented development areas, but most of these are applied across each of these cities, whether they're at a transit location or not. So Westminster, Wheat Ridge, Littleton, these are the numbers that they require in terms of parking regardless of the location of a residential development. And these are the numbers that they, those particular communities feel comfortable with.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, I did have one comment, but I'm trying to Google a commutation, and I don't know what that means. Could you help me with that, Ms. Ford?
Commuting, we have, let's see, it's.
A commutation? It's a Hindi word. I couldn't, is that what you said, a commutation?
I, I don't remember what.
Never mind, sorry.
It was about commuting. Commutation would be.
Oh, okay. I thought you said a.
Ending a prison term early, but that's not what she was talking about.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't find it, stressed me out. But I, the comment that I wanted to make in regard to parking is, I agree with your proposed per-bedroom parking plan, Michelle.
I think that's the biggest piece here, is whether you want to use a per-unit or a per-unit type. And best practices would be per-unit type, because the number of occupants in a unit is roughly statistically related to the number of bedrooms in the unit, give or take. But I mean, if you were to build a probability curve around the number of cars based on the number of bedrooms, it's going to be probably a tighter curve, in fact, than the number of people to the number of bedrooms. So it's something to think about.
And one thing, we did look at a variety of different existing apartment projects we have throughout the city, and we did look at TOD and non-TOD. And obviously, those TOD projects, we have a lower number than what these are proposed at, which in some ways makes sense. But if you look at the typical non-transit-oriented apartment, these are lining up with what we have in terms of the long-term apartment projects that are out there. So this is very similar, just a little bit less if you look across the board to what we require today, but if you look at the historic, kind of across-the-board projects that are out in the city, these line up fairly closely.
Mr. Jones?
A couple of questions. My recollection is that a lot of the conversations we've had around parking have been with, you know, the number of parking spots for the homeowner or the renter, but a lot of it's been around the guest parking, and where the guest parking's located, and the number of spots, and you can't count the on-street parking, and so how do we, how do you, how do you address that in this conversation?
I think there's some ways through the design elements that we can talk about, you know, what is the average distance a guest parking space should be away from an average door, so we can try and make sure they're evenly distributed throughout a site. So there's a lot of different design standards, I think, that we can build in that addresses some of those questions that have come up recently, where, yeah, the guest parking is all at one side of a project and not at the other. So we can look at ways to actually codify those kind of standards to help distribute the parking across the board.
And that's great. And then, I apologize, but I might digress just a little bit. I want to go back to the commercial parking, because you just kind of glazed over that just for a second.
Sure, yeah.
And again, one of the things that, for me, is a challenge, is that I know that in commercial parking, you have so many, so many parking spaces, and then it has to be broken up by, you know, an island or whatever, whatever you call that, and then another so many. Why do we have that requirement? Because I know that in some cases, that creates a snow removal issue, because you're, you know, you're having to plow in and out of these kind of little islands. Is there a real reason why we require those islands?
Well, I think there's a couple of reasons why typically cities have required them. One is to break up those large expanses of parking. One is to provide some shade to help, you know, lower surface temperatures across parking lots, just for pure aesthetic reasons, to try and get some type of tree canopy instead of just having a large asphalt area. So it's really about kind of design as well as a little bit of environmental.
And I was thinking more in, like, the, an office complex, I get like in the King Super's parking lot, those bigger parking lots, that makes a lot of sense to me. But when you've got a building, let's just say it's a twenty thousand square foot building, and parking wraps the perimeter, and maybe they have another, you know, wrap around the other side, you're still requiring that same kind of deal where, you know, now you've got ten spots and then one, because of the, of, you know, the square.
That's what you're saying.
The distance from point to point requires to have one of those things in there, and so it breaks up ten spots by one.
And there are certain, yeah, and there are certainly some communities out there who have some design standards around that, that if, you can have a parking lot up to a certain size that you don't have to deal with, parking lot islands, and you go over that certain size, you have to require them. Some codes talk about parking blocks, where you can only have a certain number of spaces, but then they're wrapped by landscaping, so it's not little pieces, it's like bigger chunks of landscaping.
Right.
So there's certainly some ways we can create design standards to mitigate that.
Again, just seeing, seeing it in a couple of examples in real life, I look at that and think, I wonder why we designed it that way, or why we encouraged the architect to draw it that way. It just seems a little backwards.
And that's one thing we have found, is we've looked back at some of the PUD cases we have. Some instances, I mean, they're really small variances or modifications, but a lot of them are parking lot islands. Can you, can you move that, the tree that should be in that island in an industrial area to the landscape buffer, and does that work better in that type of situation?
Okay. So you are willing to have those kinds of conversations? And I don't know how strict those standards are, probably written pretty strictly, but.
Today, yes.
But how much latitude, you know, do you give an applicant when they're coming to the city to propose, looking at their parking, so?
And we're certainly looking at that. And, and we're, we're certainly looking at that, and we want to give people options, too. Same thing with landscape buffers to adjacent uses. We're looking at ways, and maybe you give people four different options, and they have the option, you know, they can choose between those four options. One might be a fence with a shorter setback, one's a larger landscape area with trees. Just depends on what works best for them and that particular site. So, we are looking at those options as well.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm a little shocked Mr. Marriott wants to talk parking. Actually, this is going to be pretty quick and easy. So, I, I think that the, this definition and the way to do this with bedrooms is probably the right, the right answer, better, better than what we, better than what we've done before. But, but I am concerned about one thing, and that's, we're going from, you know, the, requiring the most parking to, to, down to kind of what everybody else does, with the exception of some communities do require a, a small add-on for guest parking, and, and this proposal doesn't. I would feel more comfortable if we had something in there for, for guest parking. I'm not worried about a, you know, a small multifamily development, I don't think is an issue, but as you get to bigger ones, that, you know, that point two that Westminster requires, or point one that Wheat Ridge requires, you know, one extra space for every ten, you know, or two extra spaces for every ten that are required, to provide adequate guest parking, I think it's something we ought to think about, let, at least, at least look into, it would put us somewhere kind of right along with everybody, but, but, but not necessarily under, so. That's been one of the topics that comes up in most of these multifamily developments. And then, the other one is, the parking for some of the, the commercial or the retail, particularly, I think of the Target over on Kipling Street, that parking lot, which is about twice as big as it needs to be. But yet, I think these proposed standards are the same as the ones that yielded that, and, you know, that one is, kind of became that way because of the size of the, of the whole development, maybe, or, or however it became that way, but the, 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 in a commercial building like that, I think that the, the user or the developer is one who is most able to tell you how much parking they need without building too much, because they have an incentive to not build too much. But trust me, they have an incentive to build enough, too, because you certainly don't want to hurt, don't want to hurt your business if you do. And so, I don't know if there's any way of, of any kind of flexibility within those commercial or retail parking standards, to where if somebody does develop a big, a large, you know, center like that, or something where we don't make too much parking, you know, when I drive by that, I think of, there could be a strip of buildings up the middle of that parking lot, providing extra, extra commercial space for businesses, and still everybody would have a place to park. But I haven't seen residential developments, really, where I'm struck that there was a waste of land by having too much parking, but it seems like that's what the insinuation is, or the developers particularly tell us, that we, we can't afford to waste this land. But yet, when it comes to that commercial stuff, I drive by a number of them where I go, what, what a waste of land that was to have made that so much parking there.
And what we do try to do so on, let's see, would be in your packet on page, well, it would be four of twenty-one of the parking, but up here on this diagram, if you look at the bottom, we are trying to scale the number of parking spaces required to the size of the development. So, the smaller, kind of, you'd have required fewer spaces, and the larger you get, you require greater parking.
Yeah. Changes just slightly. I just wonder, you know, have you looked at that target particularly, and is, is, is that enough? You know, you could-
Well, that, that, the app, the developer went above and beyond our parking requirements.
Well, and, and that's their choice, and that's okay.
Because they could have gotten away with probably a quarter less than it's there. I mean, our code-
But that would be a good study in how much parking you need. You could go there probably ten days in a row, count how many cars at three o'clock in the afternoon, and you'd know kind of what it needs to be.
Thank goodness the Costco parking lots, as big as it is.
Yeah. Good thing it's not any smaller.
There's not enough parking. That's the thing, like, there's a certain distance at which it's too crowded, and nobody wants to go anywhere.
Yeah.
So, one to two fifty or four spaces per thousand is nationally probably the most common retail payment, so Arvada is a little bit on high end.
All right. Okay.
Mr. McGough.
Yes, thank you. One of them that drew my attention was under the, it's table three, two, 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 E, community and civic parking, high schools. I was just surprised at that number, if that coincides with what we, what our current experience is. It says, the current minimum is to have one space at a high school, one space per four students, and proposed is one space per employee plus a space for every ten students. It seems to me, when I drive by the high schools, that the parking lots are much bigger than that, and more than, say, one in ten students are driving, and is it, so, I'm, I'm just surprised. Just can you tell me some more about that?
Well, the, these are the minimums, so they, they could go above and beyond that. So, these are just saying, here's the minimum amount of parking we would expect on those sites.
Okay.
But if they, if a particular school feels it's more, it's better for them.
I assume they're all much, they have mu- much more capacity than what this minimum is?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's all I want to know.
You can't also tell a public school how much parking, so that would be private high school. Just, I mean, the public school, the state statute says what-
Oh, okay.
They get to decide, and they get a permit through the states.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything from Planning Commission on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So, when I look at, at any of these problems, I always want to think about, what problem are we trying to solve? And I wonder if we went to multifamily housing, if, if we'd have a bunch of people that said, gosh, we just have too much parking. We just have a plethora of parking, and I, I just have too many empty spots next to me. I bet we don't. And, Mr. Marriott, I'm, in particular, I'm very interested in the infill, and I think that, while I would agree with you that, that moving to a per-bedroom or per, per-bedroom model might make sense, it, it's particularly in the infill that is concerning to me around not having a guest, a guest quotient or quota, because I think that's where we're going to, we're going to run into neighborhood strife, right? If we have, we have ten units of, of infill, single bedrooms, and we don't have additional guest parking, I, I am, even though I, I've worked in technology my whole life, I don't, I, I'm not a believer that people in Colorado are going to embrace autonomous cars anytime soon. I think that we all travel to the mountains, everybody's going to have a car, for the most part, that, to travel. And so, I think that if we, we can go too far very quickly. So, I, I want to keep in mind what problem we're trying to solve, and particularly in infill situations, to make sure that we provide enough parking that we don't cause strife. And quite honestly, as, as we look at what we have seen recently, especially with multifamily, a lot of that is infill. Come, and, and the other thing that comes to my mind is the, the new townhome development out of Candellas. I was out there this weekend, and it's a great, it's a great development, but if we were to reduce the parking, how much of that would push into neighborhoods? And now, we're pushing, again, neighborhood strife. And I think we want to, to me, we want to promote harmonious neighborhoods, and that means everybody should have a place to park. We shouldn't be forcing people to park in front of established homes.
One, one point on that I'd just like to make, is we aren't proposing to eliminate guest parking. All we're doing is building the guest parking into one number of, but the guest parking is there, it's just not called out separately. And I would propose that even if we do increase it a little more to match what, what you're speaking of, that we still try and wrap it into one number, instead of trying to do it separately in the calculation.
And, and I don't disagree with that. I think simpler is better, the way it's expressed, but maybe expressed with just a slightly higher number versus-
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I'd just like to discuss, Mr. Jones, the, the importance of the, the landscaping islands and the, the parking areas. So, what, what these do is they go actually a long way to mitigate urban heat island. So, if you ever drive into downtown Denver and notice in the temperature in the car that it goes up, like, you know, five or six degrees between Arvada and here, it's because of all the hardscape in downtown, and there, those little areas of landscaping and tree canopy in a large parking lot really actually help quite a lot. You mean the four cars that can park around it? Well, it just breaks up the hardscape, but yeah.
So, I would just say that, that the challenge here is, and we've not talked about technology, Uber, Lyft, restaurants are saying they need less parking, because people are ordering their food and getting it delivered to their house. And then, autonomous vehicles, I mean, are coming sooner than we think, probably not in the next five years here, but I think the difference will be that we'll need less parking probably for retail and for commercial businesses, and the parking for housing, where people live, because they'll still have guests coming over, that there'll be differences between those different types of uses.
Now, are we still going to have a lower parking requirement for senior housing?
Yes.
I, I'm struggling a little bit from the perspective that I'm beginning to see some developers going more towards wanting to build senior housing, not because that's necessarily the market, but because they can have lower parking ratio requirements.
Yeah. And one thing, we do want to look at that. Today, ours is extremely low. I think it's one space for two units, and we need to kind of recalibrate that a little bit to look at, you know, people are living longer, you're senior, you're independent. So, we want to be able to calculate that, but we do want to allow for some flexibility in that parking ratio as well.
Okay.
We have heard from some designers that the-
Excuse me, excuse me, Todd, would you mind speaking on the mic?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We have heard from some designers that the, the opportunity cost, you know, for the cost of the land is a pretty big deal, when you're requiring too much parking, in their view. So, you know, it's not just about that parking space being there or not being there, it's what did you lose by having to put a parking space there, serve it with an aisle, put a curb around it, put a landscape island in? It could have been another unit, particularly with the small unit sizes that people might come up with now.
Okay.
And, and we would also have the opportunity to have a special parking study, too. So, if somebody came in and said, I really do have a community where nobody is going to be using a car, they could provide us actual documentation to that effect, we could evaluate it and determine if that was appropriate.
Okay. Okay. I think we're almost to the next steps.
Yes. So, won't bore you with all of these tables, going through them one by one, like I intended. Never did.
That would be best. Learn your audience.
Coming up, we've got open house number one, that'll be here at the beginning of April, or open house number four, sorry, here at the beginning of April, where we'll kind of present the information you saw tonight to the community. We'll then have another advisory committee meeting in May, and that's where we'll talk about module three, which is really more about the process, and how we'll process applications moving forward, what can be done administratively, what would go to Planning Commission, what would go to Council. And then, we'll be back here in June to talk to you folks about that element of the code. And with that, as always, we do have our website that's available to anybody, all of this information, it will be on the website, as well as all the past information, and any other questions.
I don't think we've got any other questions for you. Very good. Thank you. I know, I know it's tedious, and I know that it's important stuff, so we'll, we'll plot on through it, but it's a process. Okay, we're going to take a brief stand-up, and Mr. Devon, how much longer do you think on your last one?
Five minutes at the most.
Five, oh!
That, that, present- Yeah. Presentation won't take that long.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to reconvene for the next two-hour presentation. Mr. Devon.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe this will take two hours, but-
I don't know. Ms. Miller says she's got fourteen pages of questions.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll do our best here.
Okay.
So, what's before you tonight is the fifth update to the 2014 to 2019 City Council Strategic Plan, and the changes that we've articulated in the report, and what's also articulated in the document, are the, are the changes for that, for the 2019 update only. So, this is the last year of that six-year strategic plan that started in 2014, and will conclude at the end of this year. And the, what, what occurred is the, during the January eighteenth City Council retreat, we generated these, these updates based on that discussion. Now, the other thing that occurred during the January eighteenth retreat is the discussion of what would occur during the next six-year strategic plan timeframe. That will be presented to you on April the eighth. We have a draft strategic plan that you will actually receive, actually, next Monday, at the April first council meeting, and that will be a draft document that will talk about the more forward-thinking, forward-looking strategies that would occur from 2020 to 2025. And we expect that to be a very iterative and long-term process, whereas the update for this, this conclusion of the strategic plan is basically concluding what's been approved and discussed thus far. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know we have other members of the leadership team as well that can answer questions.
Oh, that was quick. Ms. Miller, do you have some questions?
So, we're not going to go through these twenty-five slides? I even know what page they were on. So, um, no, I didn't-
Bus council?
No, no, I'm just kidding. So, my first question was around the new jobs, and we wanted to go through the end of 2019 with that, instead of just early 2019. I thought with all the build-out in the northwest Arvada area, why stretch that so long? I guess Mr. Chelsky could answer that one.
Sure. So, you're specifically speaking about new jobs relative to-
Yeah, the strategic result.
Yeah. So, there's two strategic results that are related to jobs. One's in corridors and urban centers, and another one is primary jobs. The primary job ones is we were going to do eight hundred by the end of 2019, and we haven't quite reached that goal yet. And it's specific to very specific kind of targeted industries, so research and development- So research and development, energy, professional services and those types of things. And so we are still, um, believe that we're going to be successful in that. But because of limited opportunities as it relates to vacancy and those types of things, we have challenges that are able to attract those types of jobs. And so we haven't achieved that result yet, but we believe by the end of 2019 that we will.
And do you feel like those, um, specific jobs still make sense?
So I think that in our next iterative strategic plan, that's certainly things that we want to look at as to say, what are we trying to achieve? Actually, Daniel's, uh, description of an impactful, um, strategic plan goes a lot towards that. And so as we get into the next strategic plan, we'll certainly be looking at what is the appropriate ones within this community and economic development work system. But, um, in terms of achieving that for now, I think that it was, um, our best guess at what those right, um, targeted industries were. We based them both on Metro Denver's targeted industries and, um, Jefferson County targeted industries. And so that's where that information came from because we wanted to do it in collaboration with our other economic development partners. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Uh, my next question was around senior housing and, um, pushing that off. And I would love to just see us stick that deadline a little bit closer and.
Well.
Put more resources to it and do better.
We tried.
I know.
We, we, we had the, we had the, we had the project out at Sheridan and, and West 64th. Uh, I personally went before the, uh, Colorado Home Financing Authority to, um, uh, to appeal for them to provide the 9% tax credits. Uh, but unfortunately, they were not able to do that and that, um, as a result, uh, has certainly delayed the project. Uh, it's, it's not totally, uh, totally done at this point, uh, but, uh, that, that delayed the project from our original target date. I think that demonstrates how challenging affordable housing can be, uh, unless you are able to obtain the tax credits or, or receive something along the lines such as land at a discounted cost. Affordable housing in this climate is a, is a real challenge. Um, and so at this particular point in time, we're, we're still focused on affordable housing, but that particular project is being delayed because of the fact that we were not able to help the developer get the 9%, uh, low, uh, income housing tax credits.
And we are still working on the land with Mr. Talbot that we could put some affordable housing on.
Correct, we're working on, on several different projects on affordable housing, including the project with Habitat for Humanity. We're also working with the, um, Jefferson County Housing Authority on the redevelopment of their site, um, not too far from that particular area. So we, and, and we're looking at, at different affordable housing, um, sites throughout the, um, throughout the community, uh, as, as possible sites. Uh, we just have no definitive plans at this point.
Absolutely, and, and that's where I was just saying, if we just keep some, keep our deadlines closer, then it's, it's really easy to, I feel like, to push deadlines out. And I like to keep them in just to keep everybody priority, priorities in line on that. My last question was on the juveniles in court pre-sentence assessment. I know that it sounds like we needed probation in, in place in order to make that happen. And what does a timeline look like on that? I think that's a pretty important thing to have in place.
Are you asking about, uh, probation?
Yeah, well, it sounds like in order to have the juveniles in court pre-sentence assessment, it read in here that probation had to be in place in order to make that happen.
Correct, and, and it does. And so we, as, as I think council's aware, there was a setback with probation in terms of, um, uh, our, our first attempt to, to bring that, uh, make that operational. Uh, we now have, uh, a person that is working in the, in that area right now part-time, uh, laying the foundation. Uh, we believe that the foundation will be, uh, laid within the, within the next, I would say within the next 30 days. And, and we are planning actually to, um, begin advertisement for a probation officer, uh, to, to bring on a probation officer sometime probably in the June-July timeframe. That would help us with, with meeting this strategic result.
Okay, those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, very well organized there, Ms. Miller. Ms. Ford?
Mr. Devon, I have one question. Um, on the, um, neighborhood, uh, leaders, it says by 2019, 50% of households who were not in an organized neighborhood in 2013 will have organized neighborhood associations and so forth. Do we have a complete list of all our neighborhoods in Arvada?
Yes.
We do.
Yes. Well, what, are you talking about with the neighborhood leaders or are you talking about just neighborhoods in total?
Well, it says 50% of households will be organized, um, that were not, that were not, let's see, uh, 50% of households who were not in an organized neighborhood in 2013 will have organized neighborhood associations, HOAs, councils or other leadership engagement groups with whom the city can liaison. And it says this has been accomplished. So in order to determine that we have 50% of those households, that means that we know how many households we have and what the neighborhoods are and how many of them are organized or not organized.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have that number?
Yes.
Because I, I would like to have a list of those that are in District One. I, I think a number of us had looked to have a list of neighborhoods, uh, in our district so that we could also contact them.
We can supply that data.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other questions, anything else on this, Mr. Devon?
No, what we will do, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is bring this back to you for, uh, you to act on officially during a business meeting. Um, and I think we're looking at that, uh, for May 6th, is that correct? May 6th, uh, we'll bring this back for you to act via resolution to approve it. And then, uh, as I mentioned earlier, on April the 8th, we'll start our discussion on the 2020 to 2025 strategic plan, which really was one of the areas that I believe council asked us to focus on is kind of going forward. Uh, a lot of our discussion during the January 19th retreat was, was on the next iteration of our, uh, six-year strategic plan.
Very good. Well, thank you, all, good work, a little tedious at times, but important work. We are adjourned.